Will you please rise? Let's go to the Lord with the word of prayer. Heavenly Father, we've come before you today to give you honor and glory and praise and say thank you for your love and mercy and grace that you may do for us each day. Lord, we ask you to guide us, let the Holy Spirit have its way with us, Lord. We just want to all come together as one community, one county, to work together for the benefit of all. And Lord, so just to, just guide the commissioners, guide the people here, that they'll, you know, we're not always going to agree on everything, but the fact of it is, we're here to do the best we can for the people. And Lord, please forgive us, we're failing in Jesus's name, amen. We pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you proceed? My wife baked some cookies. Oh, wait, wait, wait a minute. Man, I almost forgot. Tony, you want to get two more before we get started?
Nope, I'm good, thank you.
I forgot I left these. Cupcakes. Cupcakes are only going to be for the people liking them when this meeting is over. No. No. That ain't going to go away. Okay, before we get started, a couple announcements. If anybody is here for the rezoning at forty-three, anybody here? That will not be held today.
Are we going to be informed reliably when it's being held? Because some of us have to take off work and are putting a lot of energy into showing up to how our word seems, and it being nebulous as to when it's happening is really frustrating.
Well, and, and I appreciate that, I really do. I know it's on the webpage. I, I don't know how else, you know, we can go about telling people other than putting it on the county website.
It is still on the agenda for today though.
But it's on the county website that it's been canceled.
There's conflicting information.
In, in belief, no, I understand. Sir, I, I totally agree with you because I'll hear six different things in the course of one day, and I don't even know where I'm at most of the time, so. But we will put it out to let people know as soon as possible when it's going to be. It is temporarily scheduled for October sixteenth at the second meeting. Is that correct, Sheila?
Six p.m.
Six p.m., yes.
Why was it on the agenda and then, I mean, it's on the agenda, what happened to cause it to be off the agenda this morning?
There's a paperwork issue on the county side that wasn't filled out properly.
Paperwork?
Yes, documentation issue. Yes, thank you. Yes, sir.
So, we understand that the, the investor that is, has put forth paperwork for you guys to sign today at this meeting regarding changing the rules on the planning commission. Have you guys seen that?
Yeah, I've seen a lot, there's a lot of things that, and I'll be straight honest with you, sir. I have several questions about some of the practices that's, that's taking place. I was at the last planning commission meeting when this, this occurred, and we're not going to talk much about it because the people are not here to defend themselves. Do I think that the, the meeting was held properly? Absolutely not. That's just my opinion.
So, there wouldn't be a vote on that?
There's going to be no vote on any of that stuff today. And the reason I'm saying that is because us three commissioners have to understand some legality paperwork. For this reason, we have our attorney here with us too. He was informed of a couple things the other day, and he said, you know, by no means can we have this meeting today on this because there's things that we have to get in place that are legally correct from our side of the things. We, I don't want to do anything, make any decisions on anything if we're not doing the correctly. If we're, if the paperwork is not being filled out properly on the county side, does that make sense?
Yep.
I appreciate that.
As far as the agenda goes, the agendas are done a week prior to their meeting so that I can have the packets and things to them. I can't change something once it's out there, it's published, it has to come to them to say it's cool or that, so. But it is on the website and Yuma County Government site as well. I know it's been all over the Whitehall chatter and the Gossford chatter and emails and notices were sent to some of the people that I had. So, I would be more than happy if you want to give your emails or contact information to call you for some reason, but as Sam said, it is scheduled for the sixteenth at six p.m. as of right now.
Yes.
I'm just, is there like a printed document on how these are held, like the commissioners meeting will be held? Just because, you know, I only had three minutes the last time to talk, and I have more than three minutes worth of information I'd like to share with you all on September or October sixteenth, so how much time will I get?
Here's how this is going to work. I've never give you anybody just three minutes to talk. The one thing I don't put up, and I'm not talking about you because you've been very kind and we've talked on the phone, one thing I won't put up in the commission meeting is rude behavior. First person gets hollering and screaming, they're gone. Don't talk, I just don't tolerate it. The thing, you know, if you've got something to say on the October sixteenth meeting, we want to hear what you have to say, okay? Now, you, you, people need to understand, if there's thirty people, it's got thirty minutes of something to say, we've got a problem. Okay? So, what I would like to see, this is just me personally, you know, I'd like to see maybe four people that's got, you know, their ideas put together that want to discuss things on October sixteenth. I've talked to several people from Whitehall, I talked to a person this morning, and the, the concept is basically the same from everybody that I've talked to. So, I wouldn't mind three or four people speaking, and we're giving us a few minutes. I, I don't cut people off because we represent the public and we want to hear what you've got to say. I mean, we can't let you speak for thirty minutes because we have too many people, you know. But if we narrow it down to three or four people, I, I'm good with you speaking fifteen minutes, so something like that, if that'll help you. I, I don't want to cut anybody off, okay, because it's not right.
Thank you.
Yes.
Well, sir, would that be a public hearing?
It doesn't have to be a public hearing.
So, it will be just a regular?
Yeah, regular commissioners meeting, that is correct. And I'm, I'm, I apologize for the delay for the, for the community, but also want to apologize to the delay for Mr. Franklin and Mr. Bolt. I know they want to move forward, they want some decisions made too, so it's both sides of the fence. We're, we're going to be firm, fair, and consistent. If I was taught anything, especially by the guy, a couple guys sitting over here, is you've got to be firm, fair, and consistent, okay? Everybody has a right to be heard, but everybody has a reason for what they want to do and a reason why they don't want things done, and we want everybody to be heard. This board of commissioners are not here to upset anybody, we're not here to upset nobody. We have upset people with some of the decisions we have to make, but we simply have to make decisions, one way or another. We have no ill intent, no ill will towards anybody, towards the community. I don't love everybody, I've been around here for many, many years. It's inevitably that we're going to make a decision somewhere along the line that's going to upset somebody, and we, we hate that, we, we do, but I've, I've yet to experience in my lifetime, I can make everybody happy, you know what I mean? But we're going to listen to the people, we're going to listen to Mr. Franklin and Mr. Bolt as well, so we, we just want to be fair to everybody. Good enough? Is that good? I appreciate you coming.
Can we leave?
You, no, sir, you have to stay all night. No, sir, you can go, you can go, you can go ahead and go. You, yeah, you can leave. Thank you for coming.
All right, thank you.
Go ahead and meet.
I'm going to stay.
What, you want to stay? I knew you. You want a cupcake?
Uh, no.
Now, now, you still like me right now, so go ahead and get a cupcake now.
I hope that's not a premonition now.
It's all good. Okay, all right, we call the road call, Norm and Ron.
Yep.
Dave Riss.
Yep.
Sam here. Approval of minutes and claims. I went over the minutes, I went over the claims. Do you have any questions?
I abstained because I was not here.
Okay. I do have one question on the claims, and this will direct this to Commissioner Riss and Chad. The claim on Lincoln Park stone, we bought a lot of stone from Lincoln Park, I know Commissioner Riss had worked out an agreement with Ralph Rogers on purchasing stone, but we bought a ton of stone from Lincoln Park.
So, that's the Keenaw Gatorade project?
I believe it was.
That was prior to?
Up north.
Yeah. That was prior to the agreement with Rogers.
Okay. Then Sheila, on the interest that has been accumulated from the ARC money, I know that's in a separate front, still keep accumulating interest, correct? Who controls that, where's that money controlled from? Think of that, it's not been allocated or dedicated to anything, is that correct?
Not. The last twenty-seven thousand has been.
Right. It's still, it's still there, available, okay? Okay. Well, gentlemen, the payroll is three hundred and seven thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars and forty-three cents. I make a motion to approve payroll.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh.
All right. Regular claims and out-of-cycle claims, regular claims, two hundred and twenty thousand, one hundred and seventy-four dollars, thirty-nine cents. Out-of-cycle claims is fourteen thousand, eight dollars and ten cents. I make a motion that we approve the regular claims and out-of-cycle claims.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh.
Move on. Financial report, Sheila.
We do the minutes? Did you do the minutes?
We got to do the minutes?
I thought we did the minutes. Yeah, okay. Did payroll plan.
Moved to approve the minutes from September the eighteenth as written.
Got a motion on the floor?
Abstain, I wasn't here.
I'll second that, all in favor, two.
Right.
Thank you, Norm. You guys have to watch your own mouth, I get, I miss stuff. There I say it every, every meeting. Okay, the financial report.
Your copy's in front of you.
Yes.
It was entered in order to accept September forty-eighth end date. Norm had asked about some of the, the Franklin's that are in the negative, like explained to me that those are universal grants, someone comes in, they'll serve themselves out, and we'll keep an eye on them.
The federal ones, we'll see, right?
And the federal ones, fine, don't panic. We do have two departments that have federal grants because you've had an employee paid out of the employee fund. Not sure what this, what this is going to do to the federal grants if it trickles down, so we haven't, because there's nothing there initially on the home file, nobody on this page yet.
And we'll make sure that money, that, that's there that we have is, that will come first. Your officer, that, that money will be spent for your officer, that's necessary.
It's just, Bill, he'll work for free.
Probably got more money than Heinz got pickles anyway, so, no. Okay, old be, old business. Here, brother, come on up. How you doing, buddy?
I'm good.
Look at him. Blessed. Go ahead and take a whiff.
It's just the same.
Matt?
It's, it's the latest one.
Matt, you don't want a cupcake?
Thank you.
Just saying, Matt, you want a cupcake?
So, Ron, they would, they didn't go for the multi-year, huh?
Pardon me, no, but you know what? You got something out of it though for asking, so.
Amen.
Yeah, I, I want to be totally respectful of your time, again, Ron Remack, Billy Seabrook Associates, Brittany Dory, Warren Havener back in the back. So, I wanted just to make sure there weren't any questions on the last offer that was made after our presentation last time from United Healthcare. So, basically, what they affirmed is realistically virtually the same benefit package that you currently have now with IU Health Plan, okay? And you'll see the, the breakdown. It's almost, when I say virtually, because there's just a couple of small areas that are different from it, nothing of significance, but I'm happy to show you where those are. But they came back with not the two-year rate guarantee that we, you had asked for, and understandably so, I'm glad you did ask, but what they did come back with is an assurance in writing that the, after twenty-twenty-six, because they would take over this plan January one of twenty-twenty-six, for the twenty-twenty-seven renewal, that would not be any higher than nineteen point nine percent, okay?
Right.
If you continue the way the claims have done the last few years that have allowed you to get really outstanding renewals, then I don't see it being nineteen point nine percent, but I can't predict, none of us can predict what the health of the county will be in twenty-twenty-six. But at least we know we have a corridor of, call it twenty percent, that they cannot raise their rates for their renewal in twenty-twenty-seven. In addition, there's a twenty thousand dollar premium credit that will be paid out the second or third year, so when this, excuse me, second or third month, so when the monthly bill comes in and for February or March, there will be a credit of twenty thousand dollars, okay? That, you can use that for any reason you want, or you can have it go towards the reserve for twenty-twenty-seven, that's up to you, but that will be for a dollar-for-dollar credit. So, again, I am glad that you did bring it up, and I just wanted to, you know, make sure you didn't have any questions on that. If you remember, the Indiana Department of Insurance had twenty business days to make a decision on my formal complaint to them. Tomorrow is the twentieth day. I've checked in with them about every other day to make sure they haven't received it. I've been assured from the top of Indiana Department of Insurance that they'll let us know right away. I don't have any idea what they'll come back with. I'm not, I'm not assured that they're going to come back tomorrow and say, yeah, we'll take full responsibility without it getting elevated to a higher level, whatever that higher level is. So, with all that being said, with open enrollment, us working with Lindsay and Nicole and Sheila to try to come up with the best open enrollment dates, my recommendation is you take advantage of the United Healthcare offer that's on the table. There, it is not subject to any additional claims that are out there. So, basically, the same benefits, the exact same premium for the twenty-twenty-seven, excuse me, twenty-twenty-six year, with the assurance, you get the twenty thousand premium credit in February or March, and knowing that they can't come back beyond nineteen point nine, call it twenty percent, for twenty-twenty-seven. What I had said in the email to all of you, we would be proactive regardless, and again, being proactive means going out to Anthem and Sciho, although Sciho has not been able to compete, but the two major carriers in the state are united without, with the absence of IU Health Plans now, are United Healthcare and Anthem. So, we'll go to Anthem regardless next year to hold UHC accountable and the market accountable, and if we have to make a, a move to Anthem, so be it for twenty-twenty-seven, but at least we know that twenty-twenty-six will have virtually the same benefits, exact same premium, with the twenty thousand dollar credit, with an expanded network, because the United Healthcare is the largest provider of health insurance in the country. They have the largest network, even more so than Anthem. Both Anthem, Blue Cross Blue Shield, and UHC are the two largest networks who have. And although you're, the county had done an excellent job of steering people to the IU Health Plan, uh, uh, network providers, this will be a bene, the benefit piece of a move will be the expanded network beyond IU Healthcare providers. So, I know I went through that quickly, just wanted to make yourselves available to answer any questions that you have. You've got our recommendation, I'll still keep you in touch because I think you deserve it in regards to what the Indiana Department of Insurance says about Anthem, and that decision by them not to honor the second-year rate guarantee of a company they purchased and acquired, which was IU Health Plans.
Is there a, a agreement that we need to sign between commissioners and United Healthcare?
No.
An MOU?
A verbal from you so we can get the paperwork from United Healthcare to do so.
Well, Ron, I told you before, I put my faith in God, I put my trust in you, you know more about the insurance business than I do, probably a lot of people sitting here, but, um, we, we don't have much of a choice. So, I make a motion that we accept United Healthcare's, or Ron Remack's recommendation to go with United Healthcare starting January first, twenty-twenty-six.
Now, down here, I'm going to skip real quick. Down here at the bottom where it says the percentage change, it's ten percent, correct, for next year?
That was, yeah.
Well, I'm going from our current, I'm looking at the current, it doesn't show anything, but then it's showing ten percent next to, for.
So, if we're looking at the same, so you've got, first column is IU Health Plans, which is current.
Right.
Then the Anthem, that what they said was they were going to renew at a ten percent premium, but that was not going to be billed, what was going to be billed were the same premiums.
Okay, okay.
And it's a great question, and the ten percent was going to then be potentially the responsibility to pay Anthem back in early twenty-twenty-seven if you didn't have a good claim year.
Okay.
It's a great question.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Uh.
Three oh. Brother, appreciate it.
Appreciate it, and we'll work with Lindsay and Nicole to get the open enrollment dates.
You know, lady, this, I can't remember, I, I can't remember your name.
Brittany.
Do you have anything you want to tell us, need to bring forward?
No, I think you covered everything.
Pretty simple then.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yes. GL project updates? Anything?
I think the, our queue responses are due October eighth.
That is correct.
So, I think for now, we're just waiting for that.
Waiting on the, to get those back, October eighth is the deadline for the feedback on RFPs queues?
The invoice that we just got in the email.
On the basis?
Did we, is that good? I mean, we, are we covered on that one? Okay.
The claim that, of the paperwork, it wasn't advertised until you were executing the, and the, if you paid out the fund in Anthem, it responded, which fund they had voted on, and so that claim will get processed, it does have to be in the next cycle, and that will be eighteen, and then that will be eighteen.
It'll be on, yeah.
Okay.
But RFPs are due back on October eighth, so after they come back, then we, we'll forward with who we want to select.
All right. Will we have a special meeting for that? Chairman?
Well, and, and that's something we probably need to, to discuss as commissioners a little bit, um, you know, we could probably have a special meeting concerning that and maybe also concerning the rezone thing, because the October sixteenth timeframe is, is when school is out, and a lot of people are going to be gone. I'm one of them scheduled to be gone that week, but I don't want to miss any of this, so we need to decide on maybe a, a, a special meeting day to cover some of these.
Well, we have, we have to open those proposals all at once under the watchful eye of our attorney.
Yes, we do, that's the reason I say we need to figure out a date that we can meet, and we can discuss this, and we can probably discuss the rezoning at the same time. We'll have to figure that out, definitely, so. Uh, the commissioner board appointments, we have two more.
For GL project, I have some questions, please.
Sure.
Um, on the request for proposals and qualifications that just came out, a few things, I noticed it said that we have seven days from the time it was posted. You have a two p.m. deadline for PBS to be sent to Sheila, and actually, seven days is the end of business, and that is something that she had kicked out because it was advertised at seven days minimum, that's the law, and to say it's at two p.m., you can confirm with Sheila, but the statute does say, they describe what seven days is unless it's the end of business, not at two p.m.
That's four, that'll be four p.m.
It's already been advertised at two, so I'm just letting them, I'm asking you to address that. Second question, is it the policy of our council that when a resolution is passed, that a resolution or its attachments can be changed after it's voted on?
Depends what the issue is. Depends what the change is. Sometimes it can be something you can't.
When it's changed, isn't there a notice that has to be given to the public that you change verbiage in a attachment or resolution?
Again, it depends on what the issue is.
She is specifically stating the, it was to be originally to Sam, and it was changed to me, but it was advertised that it was changed to me. Right, it was, well, it was voted on, the document that appears in the records has different language in it than what actually got put in the paper. I'm just curious to know how that works, since we didn't, you don't read the resolution, how do we know when something gets changed?
That was not a material change, it doesn't matter.
Next question on the. Next question on the, the request for proposal. You identify an address and a parcel number as to where the jail project is going to be located. That address and that parcel number is for the entire parcel. When that's split, if I understand correctly, because so far there's no survey, there's no agreement in place, and we can find no agreement between Mr. Franklin and the county even agreeing to any of these conditions. But when it's advertised with that parcel number, when that property is split, that won't be that parcel number. That is, apparent parcel retains the original parcel number. The split gets a new parcel number and a new address. So I'm confused with how we're advertising a potential jail site build location for an address and a parcel number that hasn't yet been established. And especially if I'm looking at putting a bid in or working with someone who's putting a bid in, my information would draw me to that entire parcel number, which is 4 acres to 9.5 acres. So it's very ambiguous. And I'm asking why we haven't.
Pam, I don't, I don't need to be rude, but I can't hear you. Can somebody shut that door, please?
I'm just asking, I don't understand why we don't actually have an address to jail yet or a parcel number for the jail yet, or better than that, an agreement in place between Mr. Franklin and the county with the terms and conditions of what the swap will be.
We do have an agreement. We're swapping acres on the 43 for 9.8 or whatever it is. That is, there is an agreement.
There is an agreement, that's why it's not in filings.
Okay, well, I don't have it here in front of me, but we've had many meetings and discussions about the, what we're swapping, even RDC.
So to RDC, there might be a question, there's no copy of any agreement in place.
Okay. Then we'll have to look that up and find an agreement, because there is an agreement. But when you talk about the parcel thing, until the survey's done, we're not splitting, it can't be split. When the survey comes in and it's done, then it'll get its own parcel, it'll get its own address when the survey, when the survey's done.
Right, but when you advertise, if you advertise within a parcel number, that would be a parent parcel number, not.
And I appreciate what you're saying, but let's lose some general common sense here just for, just for a minute, if we may. I understand where you come from, you make a good point, but we can't give it an address or a parcel number until the survey is done. Once that's done, it'll receive a parcel number and an address. But nobody that is put in or requesting to entertain, to do any work out here, RFPs, have ever questioned where this lies. They've never said anything, hey, wait a minute, what's the address? Or what's the parcel number? I do understand what you're saying, but it has been very well determined where this jail site is going to be. Now, it may move 50 feet one way or 50 feet another, all depends on how the survey comes in, all depends on how elaborate positions the jail out there. But we can't tell anybody what an address is or what a parcel number is because we don't have one yet. But we've told them the location, where it's going to be. And as far as I know, all the people that are turning in for the RFPs and stuff like that knows exactly what we're talking about. There's never been a question.
And so when we submit our proposals for this address and this parcel number and the contracts are written up, then will there be a change?
There has to be. The, the survey should be, we should be having it by any time. Should be done with it or about done with it. And once that's done, then we'll change the parcel.
Going to the survey, I also went in to try and find the record where the survey was ordered. So a, a contract or a work order put out, there was no copy.
Okay, and it's my understanding, and Pam, I've been wrong by a lot of things, and I'm going to be wrong still by a lot of things, but the cost for the, the survey, the county's part doesn't meet contract criteria. We don't have to have a contract to have our county survey or survey this property.
And you're having a surveyor survey the new jail site property?
It's already been done. It was done by Tri-State County.
I thought you said Tri-State did 43.
That's what, yeah, that's what you're talking about.
I'm talking the new jail site property.
Dave Meyer surveying that.
And that's been done, that's been ordered?
Yes. That's what I just said, he should be completely almost done with that. I haven't heard back from him yet, but we met out there, around three weeks ago, and he said it'd take a couple, three weeks and it would take him long to get it done.
So you didn't put out any request for any other surveyors?
No, because it falls underneath the criteria, we don't have to. The, the cost of it, if I'm correct, and the county attorney can verify, the cost of what it was going to be, his estimated cost fell well below the criteria of us having put it up a bit.
Respectfully accepting the situation where we have an elected surveyor, and the elected surveyor is not a licensed surveyor.
I understand.
So if the county has to have property they're considering, or that they own, surveyed, they're supposed to put out a request to other surveyors for an engineering contract to do that. That's the paperwork I'm looking for.
David Meyer is a licensed surveyor.
Correct. But there's nothing in writing between you and Mr. Myers?
No, we just agreed to have him survey.
Okay, all verbal, thank you.
Well, is that correct?
Yeah. Fine.
So on the commissioner board appointments, we have two more interviews this afternoon. The appointments will be made at the October 16th meeting, whether I'm here or not. So commissioners, we'll have those two interviews this afternoon and we'll be done with that. The plan commission, ABCJ rezoned, Brett Franklin's been tabled. Tourism renewal service agreement. Here they come.
Got goodies for you.
I knew you would, we got cookies for you too. Cupcakes. All right. Oh, I'm blessed, ain't nothing wrong with me. Well.
Thanks, sir.
Good morning.
Morning, sir.
Morning, ma'am.
We appreciate your consideration this morning of the annual tourism agreement for services, renewing that. I'm Jason Kenny, Owen County Tourism Director. This is Mike Spinks, he's president of the Sweet Owen Convention and Visitors Bureau Board. And this is Beth Wood, she's president of the Owen County Tourism Commission.
Beth.
So in the packet that I gave you all, there's a written report of some of our highlights from the year, from this point in the year. And I won't, I won't go over everything on the report, but I would like to take a moment to go through it and point out some highlights. And then if you have any questions, we'd be glad to discuss that.
Sure.
So this highlights some of the things that we do. And so we donate to community projects. And so some of the things that we've donated to so far this year are putting a bench at Cataract Falls State Recreation Area with a view of Cataract Falls. And then we donated to the Cooper Commons Recreation Project. And that is a project that they're going to build a basketball court and a pickleball court and public restrooms at Cooper Park. We donated to the Owen County Civic Theater to support their live stage productions. Some other donations include the Freedom Community Center, the Owen County Heritage Culture Center. We donated to the Owen County Garden Club for various beautification projects. We made a donation to the Owen County Fair Association for their commemorative brick walkway project. And we also donated to the Gosport Town Park Revitalization Project, which is a multi-phase project to revitalize their town park. And so most recently, we donated to their public restrooms, they're building public restrooms for the town park. And we've also made donations past couple years to other phases of their project, including when they planted several trees throughout the town park. You know, another thing that we do is we sponsor a lot of events and activities in the county, so I'll point out a few of these. You know, some of the things that we contributed toward sponsoring were the Friends in McCormick's Creek State Park, the Spring 5K Race, the Fiesta Owen County Event. We've sponsored some things at the Tivoli Theater, some movies and some live events. We sponsor, we were one of the sponsors of the Gosport Business Association Adopt a Lamp Post, and that's a sponsorship of their downtown flower baskets. We sponsored some of the music entertainment at the farmer's market this year. We contributed toward the Owen County Fireworks. We were one of the sponsors of Vandelia Preservation Association Strawberry Festival, Gosport Lazy Days, as well as the Gosport Lines Club 5K Race. Cataract Volunteer Guard Department Bean Dinner Festival, we were one of the sponsors. Friends in McCormick's Creek State Park, their Arts Blues and Barbecue Festival. And then on the next page lists some of our memberships. And so I'll go ahead and mention the state-level memberships. We're a member of the Huger Outdoor Riders. We're also a member of the Indiana Tourism Association and the Indiana State Festivals Association. And we do a lot of advertising throughout the year. I wanted to mention some of our advertisements, especially the state-level advertisements. So we, we take out a half-page ad in the Indiana Recreation Guide that's published by the DNR, and that's put at welcome centers and visitor centers across the state. And then we also advertise in the Indiana State Festival Guide, and that's also distributed throughout the state. And then Travel Indiana Magazine, the See Indiana Travel Map, which is also distributed at visitor centers across Indiana. And then one of the other things we've done this year are TV commercials and Tarahoe. And so we ran commercials on WTWO, WA, WAV promoting Owen County May through August. And then we also did TV segments on WTWO, their Good Day Live segments. And, and so one of the segments we did was about Cataract Falls State Recreation Area, the Tivoli Theater and McCormick's Creek State Park. And in addition to advertisements, we also promote the county in a variety of other ways. And to name a few of those, we published a monthly events newsletter, and I gave you all a copy of the October newsletter as well as the September newsletter. So we publish that through email and Facebook and in print. So we, we print out copies and we put them at different places around town. The Visitor's Guide and the Hiking Guide, I gave you each a hiking guide. And we're, we've been publishing the Hiking Guide since 2022. And each time we do a new printing, we take the opportunity to make updates to it if needed. So actually, there will be a new one coming out soon that's in the process of being printed. It will have some updates about the trails of McCormick's Creek as they continue to reopen after the tornado damage a couple of years ago. So there's more trails reopening, will reflect that in the updated guide. You know, we maintain visitor's website, Facebook page. Our visitor-centered lobby has a wide variety of pamphlets and brochures about Owen County for people to pick up. And then our outdoor brochure holders have Owen County information that people can pick up after hours. And so we, we mail out visitor's information and we put together visitor's packets and we answer tourist questions about visiting Owen County. An example of some packets that we did, we put together 200 visitor packets for the Owen Putnam State Forest 50-50 Trail Race this past spring. And we send brochures to other county visitor centers. And we also display flyers in our visitor-centered window of events and things happening throughout the county. So, you know, if you have any questions about the report or the agreement for services, you know, we'd be glad to discuss that with you.
Well, I personally want to thank you all for what you do. It's a big undertaking and I think I'm doing a tremendous job advertising, donations, sponsorships, the things you do, not only for Owen County, but statewide too. It's commendable and I appreciate everything you're doing. There's times I wish I could be more involved in more stuff, but you know how it is, times of the essence, but.
Well, we appreciate that, that's, that's very kind.
You're doing, Beth, you got any comments?
Um, I always have comments.
Let's, let's stay on this, son.
Okay. No, I think that with the park getting the money from the state, $25 million, that's a big plus.
Yeah, no, me and Mike, we was at that meeting.
And, and then the work on the doughboy, that's going to be something to really promote too. I think that that's a huge.
Yeah, both of those are great projects for Owen County.
Good draw.
And I was glad to hear that we received, the park received the $25 million. Praise God.
Big boost.
That, I mean, when we was in that meeting, I was a little bit concerned about how much they was going to get, but then we got the $25 million to restore the park, I thought.
Roundtable meeting was very informative about the economy's effect. It was affected during, after the tornado, everything fell by a third. And, and we're at the two-thirds level and with that money, we're redoing the campgrounds. You know, we were gonna chip away at it, but I think in so many years, we'll be back up there. But we usually had about a million visitors out there.
Yeah.
And it got cut down because there's no place, you know, for camping and that type of thing. There is a small camp area, I think they improved it, but. No, we, we tried to get the word out, and the reason we're at WTWO is we didn't have any advertising in that area. So we thought that was the best way to expose Illinois and Indiana to Owen County. And it has resulted in some new visitors here.
Yeah, for the Good Day Live segments, WTWO sent someone over from the TV station and they interviewed people at each of those locations.
That's awesome, yeah. Well, once again, I, I thank you all for your work, what you do for.
We wanted to sign today.
Yeah.
So we have a, an agreement, and I'm sure you'd like for us to sign today.
Yes.
Mike's looking away, he's like, Mike's acting like he ain't hearing. You know, I, I've read the agreement, as were the other two commissioners have read the agreement for services on this contract. To me, it's, it's, it's a no-brainer to me. Do we need to read this in its entirety? Glad you're here with us, sir. So commissioners, do you guys have any questions?
No, I think they did a great job getting the word out to all people, so I appreciate what you do.
And those roundtable discussions that we've been having, and I know sometimes they've been great, very beneficial. I learned a lot, especially when Tony from Babs came and explained, explained what happened after the tornado. A lot of people don't really think about that. We know that the park got damaged and there's stuff like that, and unfortunately, a couple people was killed. But when he did his cover sheet, spreadsheet on the loss that his community has suffered, I'm glad to hear that we got the $25 million. Ron?
I move that we approve this agreement, and I'll also add in that the single signature by the board president. Right?
Yep, that's what's on there. Got a motion on the floor?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Three aye.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you all. Thank you so very much.
We really appreciate your support.
Yes, certainly. They're signing.
Okay.
I'm signing right now, Mike.
Gotcha.
Because if I don't, you know, I'm gonna forget.
Yeah, gotcha, buddy.
There's the signature on that. Sheila, y'all give this to you so you can get a copy made for them. If that's fine. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
You bet.
Very good job. Thank you for all this information that you provided as well, too.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I didn't see it.
The three?
Oh, I thought it was a single.
I thought it said Mike's. We wanna rearrange some things here. That's okay. I'd like to bring up Baker and Tilly. Mike, are you done with this, Mike? Oh, he's still signing.
He's signing. We'll be done.
Sorry, Baker and Tilly, you can't come up yet.
If you can read it, I'm done.
Buddy, you just, you put an X on there. We got you.
Got you. Alrighty. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We're gonna get Baker and Tilly. That way he can get going, okay? That's all right. He got it. Thank you. Charlie, you want a cupcake? Ain't no bunch of cupcakes yet. My wife's gonna be disappointed. Dale, you come out and get a cupcake? Praise God. How you doing, sir? I'm blessed. How about you? Amen. Amen. Highly favored. I like that.
Commissioners, I appreciate you moving Baker Tilly up this morning. This is, I'd like to introduce to you Neil Richardson. Neil has come to us this morning, all the way from St. Louis. And the reason that he is here today is because for the last several months, we've been having collaborative meetings with town and county officials just to kind of discuss different things here in the county. At one of those meetings, it was discussed how perhaps maybe we need to take a look at the tax abatement assessment process that the county and the town has, see if there would be a way to align that. Also, as it stands, the scoring process is a little antiquated as industries have continued to figure out new ways to continue to find solutions to changing market conditions. They have increased their automation. They've found new ways to do workforce. And in the current scoring system that we have, it dings those businesses instead of giving them credit for that. And so that was one of the concerns that we talked about at the meeting. And so today, Mr. Richardson's gonna share with you a proposal that Baker Tilly had put together for the county and for the town to look at, as well as a proposal to see how to pay for that proposal. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Richardson.
Yeah, so I'm very excited to be here today. I know I had my colleague come before, virtually. But I said I wanted to be here in person to meet with the county, see you all face to face. I think it's important for us to be present on the ground. Baker Tilly has served the great state of Indiana for over 60 years on the municipal advisory side, as well as regards to tax and accounting support. We've recently began to grow our economic development advisory services. I actually come from the city of St. Louis, where I served as the chairman and executive director of the St. Louis Development Corporation. Joined Baker Tilly about four months ago. Really focused on being able to support cities across the country to help them revamp, streamline their process around how they evaluate incentives, have a comprehensive application that's consistent for developers and companies that's seeking to do business in your great county. And for the community to also know that you have a process that's consistent for all stakeholders. Also being able to have a clear criteria that prioritizes the type of development that you want to see in your community. Really tailoring it based on your feedback, the community feedback, and also the businesses that you're seeking to attract. To ensure that it's streamlined, that it has a clear process, and that as you're scoring that information, you're able to have a report that you can share with the public as well. All about transparency. And that's one thing that we were lacking in the city of St. Louis that Baker Tilly and myself was able to incorporate, is to ensure not only that we had a process that was clear, but also something that we can share consistently with the public. I provided two drafts for you all today. One is a scorecard review. It starts with this document here that shares how the St. Louis Development Corporation, when I was in St. Louis, was able to create a clear process and criteria. So as a project submitted a proposal, an application, we were able to articulate to that developer or company, this is what you qualify for. Obviously, every case is unique. But having a clear policy in place allows for you all to set a baseline and then to have policy exceptions as they go. We also had a draft report that we shared with every taxing district, from the police department, to the school district, to even utility companies, to ensure they understood how any tax abatement would impact their revenue streams over a period of time. We did a cost-benefit analysis that showed if the project was not invested in within the community, what would be the overall revenue over a 10-year period? And then if their project received incentives, how that project would contribute to the overall growth of the county or the city or municipality as well. And so it really provides transparency to the public. But also having a clear clawback agreement in place. So if a developer or a company comes in and says, we're going to provide 100 jobs in your community, we're going to pay a certain wage. Who's tracking, who's monitoring that process? Having that placed within the agreement to ensure that you have clear stipulations in place that if those goals are not met, there are repercussions associated with it. So you have the carrot on the front end, where you're able to provide the incentives, but you also have the stick on the back end to ensure that if those goals are not met, that you'll have the right policies in place to protect your constituents and protect the revenue stream for your county. So with this process, it'll take us about 90 days to complete. Part of that is the initial assessment and review of the current process. What is the current application process? How do we ensure that it's at the latest and greatest for all cities and municipalities? Really being able to professionalize your process. Again, it's not about the size of the city or the county. It's about ensuring that you have the right process in place to hold people accountable if necessary, but also to create transparency for the public. We also will engage with stakeholders, whether it's the commissioners, the council, also the community, to ensure that we create a criteria that fits the needs of your community overall. And then the last part of our process is ensuring that you have the right clawback provisions in place and reporting requirements for businesses on an annual basis. We will also provide a training report and process so as we create this new policy, you have something that will transcend administrations, to have consistency across the next 15, 20 years, as you all deem necessary, that can be reviewed and updated on an annual basis. And then, as Marcy spoke to, being able to have a revenue stream that comes in associated with every project. Obviously, if you're providing some form of incentive, there is a benefit that's going to that company or that developer. What we've been able to recognize as a model that's worked for other cities is to have an upfront application fee, really sized to the project itself. An ongoing analysis fee to ensure that as we do the reporting on the BUT4 test, making sure that you're not over-incentivizing the project, as well as understanding the impact and being able to do that reporting, that cost is carried by the developer itself. And then finally, being able to have an annual fee that's associated with the ongoing monitoring. We've seen that work on these projects because the overall value of that incentive is really sized in a way in which that project is able to be financially feasible and cover the cost of this fee that the developer or company will pay to the county or municipality or redevelopment company on an ongoing basis. What we see is a range around 10 to 25 basis points, or 0.1 to 0.25% for the amount of the incentive. So just for illustrative purposes, if you have a project around $5 million, you can expect around a $15,000 fee associated with that project. So again, our estimated cost for this initial structuring of this process is $50,000. In other larger communities, we've charged up to $100,000, $125,000 because it's a larger community. We've really tried to narrow this focus to ensure that it's as cost-effective as possible, but also speak to ways in which you're able to recoup some of that initial investment that you're making towards this program. So I am here to answer any questions you may have around the process, our engagement with the county, or anything about Baker Tilly itself.
That's a lot.
Yeah, I know. It is. But it is something, I think, is really important to have. What we've recognized across the industry is, you know, counties, municipalities, they're excited to cut the ribbon on these projects, break ground on these projects. But there are certain commitments that have to continue to be upheld as well. And how are you tracking that? And what we've been able to do is recoup some of the costs that may have been lost as a result of those parties not meeting those obligations down the line and being able to ultimately ensure that we're being fiscal stewards of the city's funds and we are entering these agreements as true partners overall.
I agree. It's a lot to take in and...
Well, definitely, yes.
What I would like to personally do myself, and I'm just one commissioner, is I would like to go through all this, dissect it some.
Yes, sir.
But I also like to speak to the town board.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to go to the town board meeting.
They already presented to us.
You already presented.
It was not a good presentation because our images and that were not explained. You couldn't explain it, as you should, and we tabled it.
Are you just going to have another meeting with this, Mike?
We're gonna have some discussions. We're not gonna have a physical meeting because we have to consider the rates they're charging for a small town like this. We're not St. Louis. We're not Cleveland. We're not Terre Haute. We're not Bloomington. So we don't have the funds that are explained in some of the things here. So we have to get better explanation on that. And I'm not shooting you down here.
No.
I'm not shooting you down here. I just want to make sure that you understand, we didn't get a very thorough talk with them the day that they presented to our board.
Well, and, but I have to take that into consideration, Mike, too, because nothing against the presentation at all, but, you know, I do want the feedback from the town as well. But I know you've worked with Baker Tilly for many, many years.
We haven't worked with them directly. We've worked with another firm.
Another firm, okay.
But Baker Tilly is the top of the line for tax abatement and that type of thing. We have another tax abatement agreement that we had in place for some years. I think Marcy's well acquainted with it.
Okay.
And we are behind times, but we don't want to overkill.
That's understandable. So it's a lot to take in, for sure, so...
Marcy?
And I think there's room for discussion with Baker Tilly on that, on where, what do we need and what can they provide? That's a good fit. This doesn't have to be, this isn't set in stone. Yes.
So I know you have a grading system already in place. Where did that come from? Is that...
That is, has been passed down through economic development. It was there when I took the job. It was set in place from the resolutions before I was there.
But there's no company involved in that?
No.
That's a zero cost to us, essentially, other than it's not very good, right?
That's correct. Yes.
Just asking.
And again, it really doesn't reflect, there's been discussions when we have, because we have regular reviews every single year with those companies that receive tax abatements. There's confusion now that's coming from the requirements and the criteria in order to make the recommendations to you, as well as, and maybe Sheila, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I do know that everything has to go through the auditor's office. And that's been confusion as well, because whether it's a town abatement or a county abatement, who's supposed to be receiving the paperwork? Who does it need to go to first? Who needs to sign it? And then we're, like, we're pushing in on deadlines because we don't know exactly who's supposed to be getting the paperwork. A clear process between the two and streamlining that would be beneficial.
Oh, I agree. And I know we have one member of the council here, Joe. Thank Joe for coming today. Everything has costs associated with it. You know, I mean, I don't care what you do today. It's got a cost associated with it. So at this time, I think we need to take it under some blind. But what I'd like to see is maybe a joint meeting with commissioners and council to understand the process in a whole. And Sheila, I'm sure you can help us with that process, how it works. But I think we need everybody on board, if that makes sense.
And Baker Tilly is going to come back to present to the county council later this month.
Oh, they're coming on the 14th?
Yes.
Yes, I'll be on the 14th.
This is a question for Baker Tilly, just to help clarify something, just to know a little bit better. With the law changes that have been enacted, that apparently are giving more tax deductions to businesses, both in real and personal properties, this is all unclear yet. These things are all being worked out. What, is there an advantage for this new review to be done now before we know what those potential deductions will be? Or is it a speed to wait one year until all of this gets worked out in the law to know how much additional deductions are going to be given in our county? Because we're already giving so much in the way of abatements that we need to see a greater picture. So what's the advantage of having this process now and the new method of doing this versus waiting here?
I think it's also understanding, being able to evaluate the process where you are now. And then being able to assess the new laws that are coming down the pipeline and being prepared for that. I think if you wait another year, you're just gonna be further behind in that process and having to start over and create an entirely new process rather than creating something that can be refined over time. Laws will change on a regular basis. Our goal is to create a clear process, as Marcy laid out, that everyone understands. Have a training, have a handbook that everyone can follow, and then be able to revise that on an ongoing basis. Laws change, you know, year over year, based on who's in office. And to be able to have a handbook that everyone understands, this is the process, have consistency around it, and then being able to modify that based on laws that are being implemented that will allow for the county and the town to be on the cutting edge and be prepared to be responsive to those changes, rather than having to do an overhaul every time something switches.
I have a question. And just humor me for a second. Is there any way that you could plug in a couple of our businesses that are currently under an abatement into this criteria to see what it looks like under this plan, as opposed to what we're currently doing? Specifically, Dodd's and the holster.
Henry Holsters?
Yeah, just because those are two that I'm familiar with. If I could see them plugged into this scenario, what would have changed between his proposal and what we're currently doing? Does that make sense?
It does.
Is that doable? I mean...
But this hasn't been created.
Well, I know, but... Do you know it well enough to, do you know well enough to do something like that to kind of give us an idea of what it would look like before and after?
So I would say we can do an analysis to show that some of the samples, like reports that we're showing, I can show you how that would be presented.
I mean, that would be more beneficial to me than you talking, because I, you're outside my bailing link here.
No, understood. But I also want to make sure I'm clear about the score... No, understood. But I also want to make sure I'm clear about the scorecard and criteria will be developed in partnership with the community. So it's not saying, I'm going to say this is the criteria.
Right, but you could take some standards if you would.
Yes, exactly. Yes, sir.
Okay, and that's fine. I just would like to see, because I know what it looked like before. Then, Joe, you're on the financial side of it. Did that make sense to you, how we score these companies when we give abatements?
I understand how we score them, and if there's...
Did it seem like it had holes in it that could be fixed, though?
Last few have been challenging and have taken two or three meetings to get through because of some of the scoring issues.
The scoring issues certainly be augmented, and we could adjust those potentially ourselves.
Right.
If you got a lot of options, how many abatements are applied for each year?
Right.
And...
It's not that way.
Yeah, and I agree.
And within two million dollar increase for the abatements, you know, starting next year, unless we'll be applied.
Mike's good, that's a good point.
So you've requested me on the fourteenth meeting, public hearing that night, to start the meeting for our 2026 budgets and a pretty involved calendar or agenda so far. Would it be better to call a special meeting with everybody so everybody's on the same page? As well as, this is what I got, this is what you passed out to them today. So if you're going to be on the fourteenth meeting, please try to get it to the council so that they can look at it. These guys are just seeing it for the first time because it's not what we were given for their agenda.
Okay, yes.
Will do.
I mean, I think a special meeting probably would be better. That way you could have more one-on-one conversations and questions, especially since you're saying that, you're right, that's going to be a very full meeting.
Do. And that'd be something commercial, but we're going to have to discuss about maybe holding a special meeting or two when this is over, like I say, the week of...
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth, when the kids are out of school. I'm not going to change my plan for my grandkids. So we will study that and try to set up a time where we can all meet, Joe. If that works for you.
Yeah, there's obviously a lot of baggage in that, but certainly have.
I think we all need to be in the same room together.
You want everybody to be on the same page?
Absolutely. We don't want to make an agreement. You guys are all for you guys. We will...
Are there any pending abatements right now, Marcy?
No. I mean, every year we do a review. The review comes, each recommendation comes before each governing body. So I mean, technically every year it's pending based upon what the decision is of the governing body upon the recommendation. And that, again, is another reason to bring this to forefront, is because there's been a lot of discussion, because there haven't been clearly defined clawbacks. You talked about, I believe you mean Mater Mill, and there's been a lot of discussion there.
Yeah.
And what could we do? And because we don't know what we can do?
Right.
We don't know what to do.
Well, you know, for better or for worse, we leave money on the table, because if they're not meeting the criteria that we set forward, there's really no clear path to what do we do about it.
Yeah, if they're not meeting their, each year they tell us what their employment is and what's going to increase or decrease. And we have to be in agreement on that before we can sign off saying, you know, you can continue on your tax abatement schedule, because it is on the schedule. Five years, eight years, ten years, whatever you agree to. But if you can't meet the requirements, then how do you deduct from that? How do you get back even with it?
Well, and do it fairly across the board for everybody. I mean, the scoring thing makes perfect sense to me, but I would like to go through it more.
Yeah, so you thought of that special meeting?
Doesn't it make more sense that if you had an abatement, it would be a short-term abatement, you know, maybe like a year or two years to see if the business is producing? Because I know we dealt with this with another issue on abatement, instead of having like long-term abatements.
Well, if you look around the state, okay, they have abatements, then they have super abatements, and the super abatement ties you into twenty years. So abatements are normally ten years, maybe five, but, you know, there's criteria in there that you have to meet each year. It comes into a review. If you don't meet them, then the review of the town or the county has to say, okay, how are we going to correct this? If we can't correct it, then we're going to have to take back the abatements. That's what they talk about clawback.
Right.
You're going to take the percentage back, but, you know, it's not, it's something for a larger city or town to do than what we are. We have some big industry here with Cook and Boston. Boston's in the middle of theirs, Cook is almost through there, abatements that they were set up for a ten-year vacant capacity.
Okay, thank you.
Boston still has some time to go.
And the scoring criteria is what kind of dictates the initial recommendation of how long an abatement should be.
Right, right. Yes, Pam?
Last question. Mr. Marcy, can you please just clarify, Baker and Kelly mentioned that one of the things that they do are, like, there's revenue stream, the app fee, the analysis fee, the annual fee for the monitoring, and he indicated that those get paid to the county or to EDC. But I believe in our agreement, our county hasn't seen any revenue or income from an abatement, that all of that revenue goes to EDC instead. Is that correct?
Correct. On, there is an initial application fee of five hundred dollars. Five hundred dollars goes to cover administration costs for the months that goes into putting that abatement together. That does go to economic development, and currently there are no other fees established for the county to receive everything. However, I would like to give props to the town, though. The town has an abatement that does have, one of their abatements does have a fee that comes back in for economic development to the town, and that, I think, is what Baker-Tilly is discussing, is that's something the county could do as well, so that those funds could come back into the county.
So the yearly fee that every person is going to get an abatement, that yearly fee or percentage, it still comes into EDC?
No, there is no yearly fee. There's only a minimum.
We're proposing that as a new opportunity.
So currently, you only get the initial five hundred dollars, and then you receive no other...
That is correct.
No other revenue from the abatement process. Okay, good job.
Thank you, sir, for your presentation. I'll get with you, and hopefully we can have a joint meeting and stuff with those.
Yes, I'll...
Just remember we got a toothed paper by Friday to be involved in this, because they were made many, at least for the other EDCs, possibly. There's two extra weeks.
You got this.
Did you see one?
So do we just need to take ourselves off the fourteenth right now? Listen, while we do that, then you tell me when we're doing the workshop, and I'll work with Baker-Tilly to have someone here to take it. Make it easier, right? Okay, let's do that.
Good. Now we're going to move on to the Economic Development Corporation Professional Service Agreement. My life's a long-winded thing. And I'm going to say something before we go here. Norm's going to take the lead on this, because he had some questions earlier, but Marcy, I personally want to tell you thank you for everything that you do for this county, personally. And I also want to say, I am very disappointed at the personal attacks that's been launched against you for what you do for this county. The ignorance of some people don't constitute the absolute professionalism that most people present. You don't deserve, I'm not politically correct, so I'll probably say the wrong thing, but it doesn't make any difference. I think people are going to know where I come from. You don't deserve the personal attacks that you've had against you. We don't always agree on everything, but I've never used what you've presented personally against you, and I never will. And I don't think this board will either. So for the unfortunate circumstances that have come before you in the past, shame on those people. Instead of calling you and sitting down and having a conversation with you one-on-one to talk about their concerns or their discussions or whatever they may be, they just personally attacked you, and that's unfair. And this Board of Commissioners will never perform such an act. If they do, they're going to have to, well, it's not going to happen. There's a lot of things that come up in these commissioner meetings that we may not agree with the public, but to personally attack somebody for what they're trying to do to benefit this county is wrong. And I just want to tell you, I'm sorry for what you've had to go through, and we've had some discussions, you and I, and I hope it ends.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity and the privilege that it is to serve my community. I love Owen County and am very thankful that every day I get to do what I can do.
Thank you. Norm?
So you brought that before us, and I had a couple of additions I wanted to have made. Those additions have been made to the contract. You got a cup?
There's not, there's not much of it.
So my question was pretty simple. I wanted to see what we were investing. I wanted to see what the return on that investment was by the quarterly reports, and I also wanted to have you to come back to the commissioners before you move forward with anything that would tie us into potentially, anything that you come up with, we'd like to look it over. We're not second guessing you. We want to be cognizant of what's going on mainly, and with the reports, that'll give us the ability to know if the investment we're making is being returned in the work that you do, and that's all it was about. So with that being said, I move that we sign the professional service agreement between OCC, OCCC, EDC, and Owen County for the upcoming year.
Public discussion, please.
Not while we're on, you can have, you want to discuss it while we're in the middle of a motion?
You made your motion that the fourth is looking up to ask, it's a public discussion.
Go ahead. What do you got, what's on your mind?
The council met last week, we have to go, and they adopted an approval to go forward with an economic development department. Now, I know there's one council member here, but two council members are at AIC. What they adopted and approved, they had a discussion regarding developing a new economic development department for Owen County that is to be established under the council. The county supervisor, they also have an economic development department, as well as using economic development corporation services. So this is something that's becoming commonplace. And the question came up, because a part of the heavy dialogue that went in on the council meeting discussed that redo EDD, one of their milestones would be to take over abatement processes and reviews. Another one was to look at those extra economic development monies that will come in to the county and how those can be used. So the question I have before we make the vote on accepting this contract, we have a budget hearing coming up, and we have seventy-five thousand dollars allocated in that budget for economic development corporation or EDC. And it's my proposal that that be approved, but at this point, there's no urgency to approve this contract. And if the Board of Commissioners could possibly consider giving council at a joint meeting, possibly including the discussions of the EDD in the same joint meeting, since they tie in Baker-Tilly and possibly the EDD platform that was discussed and voted on to go forward with, that would give them a better opportunity to explain what the EDD could do and what portions of this seventy-five thousand dollars should be allocated to EDC. It's my understanding from this meeting, there's no objections to using EDC, and there were coups given to the great things that EDC does do, but in, as other counties are doing throughout the state, developing this new department, economic development department, it allows a certain other level of oversight and transparency. And I'm just asking that you please consider before voting to accept this contract, that you consider allowing the council members to be present and have this contract as well as Baker-Tilly discussed on the same platform, because there is no urgency that the process is set out. It does not go in effect until January the first. I do believe there's an error in the contract where it says reports will be issued on January, March, September, and December of 2025. I believe that's supposed to reflect 2026. So I know that there's things in there that needed to be corrected, but that's what I'm asking, is that you consider tabling this vote and having this thing discussed with the four councilmen.
Okay, here's my answer to that. EDC has been funded for many, many years. They haven't had contracts since 2017. I spoke to Marcy about this, that we needed an agreement, a contract between EDC and the commissioners, because it falls under commissioners jurisdiction. I was asked by the council, Joe was here, that, you know, was we going to get a contract? Norm addressed the contract a couple of meetings ago, had a contract drafted up that answered the questions of the commissioners. I also was asked by the council that, you know, if we have a contract between the commissioners and EDC, they would support him of that. And I was also told, or listened to the last meeting, that said if the commissioners didn't come up with a contract, or maybe didn't have an agreement between EDC, that the council would take a look at what they could do to help the situation. I want to address something. There was an email sent out the other day addressing the three commissioners, Councilman Neff and Sheila Reeves. The email did not address the other five county council members. My opinion, I think it should have, okay? They should have been entitled to this. It says, "I know you've discussed the upcoming EDC contract. Anton brought up a wonderful idea that would greatly benefit the county. What are your thoughts about having the EDC under the county's authority? This should greatly benefit the county. You know, we would have more control over what the project, the county money was going for. We've already established that in the contract. We might also include grant writing in that position. Grant writing, the commissioners are going to hire a grant writer for Owen County. It's something long overdue." And it says, "The possibility is endless." I do not agree that there's other possibilities for this. My response was, "A big thanks to Norm for finalizing the new contract draft, which successfully incorporates answers to the questions we commissioners raised. I believe the established commissioner oversight and quarterly review process will be highly beneficial and provide the necessary accountability. Since we also have the clear ability to revoke the contract at any point if the EDC is not meeting its obligations, our safeguards are strong. I am confident in the commissioners' ability to manage this agreement. My pragmatic suggestion is to enact the new contract now and wait to see its impact over the next year before interinducing any additional changes like council." This contract is only for one year. It's an annual contract. I'd like to see where it goes this year, take all the input from the council, and me and Joe's talked about this, and you can say whatever's on your mind. But it says, "While I understand there are strong personal feelings regarding this matter, our focus must remain on this pragmatic legal document and the safety measures we built into it. The EDC has received funding for years without the contract, without any serious incidents. This agreement simply formalizes the relationship with clear accountability and safeguards in place." That was my response, and also sent it to the rest of the remaining council. Norm asked for some clarification on the contract. He added a couple of things in there. It's been added. He's got...
We do need to fix that scribble.
What's that?
We do need to fix that scribner error there. We do need to fix that scribbler error there on the...
On the date.
On the date.
We can do that.
We can do that.
But I'd like to see... I want to see what happens the next year. I want to see how this forms out. In the meantime, through the next year, the council, along with the Commissioners and anybody else who's got some input, that comes up with some better ideas and goals and solutions or stuff like that, we have a whole year to work this out, to see if there is any better ideas or solutions. And I think Marcy understands that totally.
Yes.
I do want to like to respond to your comment about the email. An executive board council, if that was sent by the president and the vice president to the Board of Commissioners, just so when an email gets sent from the Board of Commissioners, I don't understand if you're saying that was inappropriate, that it included all the council members.
Man, look, it doesn't make a difference who they sent it to. I'm just saying, I wish all, everybody would have received the same email so they could have got the feedback. And they did. They got the feedback. I sent it to them.
Well, thank you for considering it.
Yes. You're welcome. Go ahead, Norm.
So make a motion that we go ahead and sign this contract for the following year, noting that there is a year date error on the contract that'll need to be corrected. And I'll look forward to hearing the reports, and hopefully we will see a return on our investment that we're expecting to see.
Joe, did you have anything?
Just to clarify, what the council voted on was simply if you guys didn't come up with a contract, which we spoke of in the budget hearings, that we just felt uncomfortable with funding seventy-five thousand if there was a contract in place. And that's not the EDC, that's anything across the board. And so that's where the contract talk came up. You guys created the contract. And the council meeting was simply if you guys did not go forward with the contract, then the council would explore what to do with that seventy-five thousand and come up with, you know, some answers. So that was simply a vote to explore if you guys did not approve the contract. You guys approved the contract. I think the seventy-five thousand was well spent. If there was further animosity or anything that thinks, you know, the council may think that EDC could improve on, you know, it's... I know the council had ideas as well. We have the ability to add funding and meet with the EDC and Marcy and come up with ideas or additional funds to boost that circle.
Absolutely.
And the conversations that I was in on was a potential to look at it being a department at some point in the future. That wasn't voted on, and it definitely wasn't set in stone because it's not in place.
Correct. So that's... You guys signed the contract also solidifies...
So anyway, that's my motion.
I'll second that as long as the date gets changed on it there.
And so how do we handle that, Tony, with the date? Can we?
You can just put it there. He can just hang it right there.
Okay, I did. So, and I... Do I need to initial it or anything?
You'll put it on there, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Here's this one that we can sign.
You got a motion on the floor. Date is second.
Yes, I do.
All in favor?
I...
Thrill.
Thank you, Commissioners. If I could, I just want to let you know that as it stands with EDC, the county Commissioners always have a seat on the EDC committee, which meets every month. So Mike Spinks is the liaison for the town with their contract with us. He shows up to each monthly meeting. So if there is a Commissioner liaison, we would add them then to making sure that they are there to not just have quarterly reports, but monthly reports on economic development.
I make a motion... I'm probably gonna get kicked on this one. The date... Is it... They're on Fridays?
They're on Friday mornings at eight AM.
I make a motion that Dave Riss sits on the board.
Second that.
All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
You want a cookie, Dave?
No, a cupcake.
Cupcake. Okay. You got anything else, Norm?
Otherwise, I mean, I have a meeting with my Executive Board tomorrow morning based upon this meeting today. So if we can go ahead and get the document, then we can go ahead and get things signed, and I can have that back to you by Monday.
Yeah, because they have... We signed the agreement, but then she needs to take it to her board, and they'll have to decide whether they want to accept the agreement as well, then have it back to us.
Okay. Let's just go ahead and sign it and get it done, then.
Go ahead and take what they're signing. Okay.
I noted the change in the initial list, so we should be good.
The next thing we got is the precinct establishment order. I have to read this. No? Don't need to... I'd want to discuss it.
Oh, yeah, you can don't. Yeah, you don't have to read all of it.
Okay. "It's a notice of proposed precinct boundary changes..." I'll read the short part of it. "To the voters of Owen County, you are notified that the election division of the Office of the Secretary of State in Indiana has determined that the proposed order by the Owen County Board of Commissioners to change certain precinct boundaries within this county would comply with state law, and that the election division has notified the Commissioners that precinct boundaries may be established in accordance with the county's proposed order." It's just a change here. Once the boundaries of the following exist precincts would be changed by the adoption of the county's proposed order. Marion, the precinct will change to Marion One and Marion Two. Nothing we have to vote on, it's already been done, so it's just a notice. Okay, highway department. Amy, do you want to speak? I know you're here.
No, I'm...
Okay. Well, I seen you come in. I'll make sure you... Okay. You want a cookie? Chad, you want a cookie before you start?
Not yet.
What about the cup... Somebody's gonna have to eat a cupcake. My wife's watching this. Okay, look, everybody wants... Oh, Charlie? Charlie does? Well, let's let Charlie sit and speak. Charlie's sitting here through the whole entire meeting. Appreciate you, Charlie, patient as can be.
No, no problem.
Come on up and tell us what you got some good news for, Charlie. Now, Charlie.
It's gotta be good news. Oh, it's gotta be good news, sir. Thinking about that cupcake now.
Yeah, you go ahead, buddy.
Well, if I can dive right into it, basically, it had been put in front of me by Greg probably a year and a half ago about, I guess, a New Holland tractor you have out there at County Garage. It's been down. It was explained to me that tractor would not move forward or backward. I guess Blesch Brothers New Holland had been contacted. I guess they sent someone up. They said, you can correct me if incorrect, but they speculated that rear and front tranny seals had been blown. And they said, "We cannot guarantee that that's the problem till we split the tractor." At an approximate cost of six thousand dollars. So Greg had asked me to kind of go out and revisit that a few weeks ago, kind of to get a handle on value of that thing both ways, as it is, and what it would be worth repaired. So we're talking about a 2018-year model New Holland TS 6.110 with a sidearm ditch mower on it. Don't know the brand you might, Chad. Alamo mower. Okay. With about forty-five hundred hours, give or take. And I'm just gonna say something that impressed me, just to throw it out there. But, you know, I look at a lot of this stuff, and whoever runs that tractor needs a pat on the back. That thing is spotless clean.
There's only been one person driving it.
There you go. I mean, inside and out, some... Whoever has run that has cared for that. So that's worth note. But I had been asked to throw some values at that thing, so I contacted a few people as far as value of that as it is. Sent them a bunch of pictures, explained the situation, reached out to three places. One, Boot Heel Tractor Parts in Missouri, which is a big liter model tractor parts outfit. They were a little vague, but they said ten thousand, maybe plus a little, as it sits. That had been represented to me to kind of get these numbers without that mower in the event that mower could be possibly fitted to another tractor later. So those bids are with the mower that's on it currently removed, just the tractor.
Okay.
So Boot Heel was ten plus, little vague. Reached out to Cook Tractor in Missouri, again, similar numbers, a little vague. Ted Everett Farm Equipment in Monrovia, who I know, and I think they said they had purchased something off the county in the past. They said seventy-five hundred dollars. But I talked to Dick up there, and I asked him if it was okay if I, you know, put this forward in public meeting, of course. They laid the offer out there that said we would sell that tractor so it could be taken to Ted Everett Farm Machinery, has like six large, really well-represented auctions a year, and they would sell that tractor for a 10% commission. So that's, you know, if it was something you wanted to disperse of, I thought that was a pretty decent thing for them to do. As far as value, so I went back running on some auction results on similar pieces. So I found a 2015-year model set up with a similar mower that had sold in September of 2025. It had twenty-five hundred hours on it. So a lower hour tractor. That unit at auction brought thirty thousand dollars. There was another example of a 2016-year model with a similar sidearm ditch bang mower that sold the 25th of August of this year, twenty-five nine, twenty-five thousand nine hundred dollars. That had two thousand engine hours on it. Then I found an example of one that had been sold June of this past year, a 2013 model with a sidearm mower. I'd kind of like to note the condition was pretty rough on that particular tractor and hours unknown. It sold for nineteen thousand dollars. And just for clarification, all of those I mentioned are the exact same manufacturer and model. Then, just for a little bit of comparison, I found a result on a 2017-year model with no mower. That was very nice, with fifty-five hundred hours on it that sold for twenty-two five, twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars. But once you get into what guys are asking for these things, as far as, you know, retail and advertised dealer prices, you know, they get up into the low fifties, mid-forties. You don't want it advertised on a dealer's lot. So, you know, however you want to interpret that, as for value of current machine, there you go. Just for clarification, those auction result numbers that I, you know, the second bid of information, those were, you know, auction results, which, I mean, I would feel would be a better gauge of a true cash value of the unit.
So Charlie, with these numbers, it sounds like you're telling us to fix it.
Um, the way it was represented to me was that Blesch wanted six thousand dollars, and it's something else that I had talked to Greg about too, that's worth a mention. Greg had told me when that was first mentioned to Blesch, and they sent someone out, we're talking about a significant time back. So I would think you'd want to almost contact them again to say, hey, is this still a valid number to split and diagnose? A second question that comes up, if you open that thing up and it's a disaster, because I think Chad had the number like maybe a twenty-five thousand dollar...
The worst-case scenario they gave us then was if they split it for six thousand, and it was a disaster, it was gonna cost forty thousand to fix. That was worst-case scenario.
You got a best-case scenario?
Six thousand dollars to split it. Yeah, six thousand to split it.
It looks like to me, though, if we sell it, we're getting between seventy-five and ten. And then we're gonna have to turn around and buy one that's gonna be thirty-plus. That's forty thousand dollars right there, so...
I will throw in there, not to interrupt, that it seems to be that... And, you know, it's what I do for a living, not necessarily, you know, county mower-specific tractors, but those things have a very hard life. So with no opinion being put forced by me on what you should do, it's worth a mention, to your point, that, okay, we could get this one going. We could go spend forty-five or fifty on a unit with two thousand hours and be right back where you are now. You know, there's no guarantees, you know?
You don't know what you're getting.
Don't know what you're getting. And I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I know you'd done a little research on your own, and I think you'd kind of come up with, maybe there's a couple model years of those that...
That the transmissions are horrible in those couple years. Talking to some New Holland people, and it just happens ours one of those years.
Well, I love you.
I can also throw out there, for value reasons, that mower in the secondary market by itself is... I mean, they're not... They're extremely high-new, but it's not a huge value piece separate from the tractor, for whatever that's worth.
Well, your professional opinion?
Uh, that's a tough one, because of the unknown. You know, if you split that thing for six thousand dollars, I mean, you will not get off that easy. You'll split it, they'll diagnose it, then there'll be an additional cost to fix, of course. But, you know, if they say, you know, on something that modern, you know, it could be some sensor issues, oh, wonderful, you know, we get in there and it's literally some type of sensor, and they say, oh, we can fix this tractor for, you know, ten. All right. But if you can't...
Just throw this out there. If we split the tractor and it is major, that tractor's not worth anything split laying there.
Correct.
They'll have to pay to put it back together, then to turn around and sell it salvage.
I would say... But that is a tough call.
So if it costs six to split it and you get in there and it's a problem, and they got to put it back together, I mean, yes, it's gonna be about six grand to put it back together.
You know, I wouldn't know. That would be a good question. Brandon Hess is the store manager down at the Blesch Brothers New Holland store. I know you guys have always dealt with. Great guy, eight-one-two-six-three-six-fourty-fifty, if you need his phone number.
But if we split it and it's junk, and we pay to put it back together, whoever we sell it to is gonna know that it is junk.
Correct.
Yeah.
So you're gonna get...
But with it being split, I'm not sure...
Yeah.
Unless it's going to a tractor parts place.
And, you know, the numbers that guys threw at me, you know, when I contacted Cooks, Boot Heel, and Everts, I would feel pretty comfortable representing those numbers as salvage bids, so blood, guts, and feathers.
Yeah. Okay.
I know that really doesn't answer the question, but...
Well, it gives us an idea of what I mean.
Appreciate it.
No, not a problem.
Thank you, Charlie.
No, you're welcome.
Thanks, Charlie.
All done with me, gentlemen? There's only one more point of business I've got to deal with.
Take the cupcake.
Can't have Mrs. Hobbs mad at me.
Yeah, if them cupcakes are still here when I leave, I don't...
Yeah, see, let's get this... Let's hit this target.
Anybody want a cupcake while they're holding? Somebody please say yes. Come up and get one. We'll take... Got ten seconds. Yeah. They're messy, but they're good. Just shove it in your face and go. That's what I'm... They're good, ain't they? Yeah. Alright, okay, go ahead and enjoy your cupcakes, but, um, what do you got, Chad?
Okay, the paperwork I just gave you, I got the email last night, I think you guys all heard the tag in that email. It's the, uh, RFP selection, the bridge inspection.
Yes.
Scoring thing. And I believe the only LPA I have in my office is Benita, so she'll have to be the one that signs on.
Good.
After we score. I just wanted to get you guys the copies of the scoring material. As of the department, we're mowing every day. Um, Freedom Road should be finished up as far as all the driveway pipes and everything by the end of the week. Ready for pavement. We did find another culvert pipe during the ditching process this week that we did not know existed that needs replaced at the intersection of Braysville, uh, Freedom Road and Pottersville.
And when you said they're going, when, when's the paving?
I have to make contact back with ENB this afternoon to find out the exact date.
So we're done with all the ditching and everything?
Yeah, we've got one, one road pipe that we've discovered ditching's completed, but we did find one more road pipe that we'd had no idea even existed.
Now, where, you said, is it Braysville and?
Right at the intersection of Braysville, Pottersville.
Right there, okay.
And they're gonna pay both of them when, while they're here, is that what they're gonna do? Because there's a little road there in, in Freedom.
Freedom that is, it's ready.
It's ready to do.
What's, we call Pearl Street, it's actually listed as High School Street next to the, between the Fire State, from Freedom Marty Road down to Spring Street, but by the community center. We've got that little section, then Freedom Road, and then our.
And it's ready to go?
It is ready to go.
And did you see the information about next year's community crossing grant?
Yes, I seen that this morning.
We're kind of in a tight window there.
Yes, very tight window.
Do we, have we been, I think we've been already working on that, next year's stuff, right?
Yeah, I do not have a list of roads that you guys have wanted. I know, I think Freedom Marty was one of them.
Yep.
In, in discussion, but I don't know about.
Well, we know exactly what our money is, is that correct, Sheila, one point four something?
One point four one one, that's this year's.
One point four one one, yeah.
It'll be down to one million next year.
It'll be down to one million for twenty twenty-six. This year, you only got one point four.
Yep. So we need to get on the, the discussion about what roads.
What roads you want me to get numbers on, to see what will fit in that one day. So I've got till October thirtieth or thirty.
Thirty-first, I think.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have much time.
Completed.
So what do you wanna do on that, Sam, with this, or district? And we'll figure out which ones we wanna do.
Well, I think, yeah, I mean.
Three roads per district, do you see if that'll cover it or not?
You know, with the money sits, the money situation is what's, we can, we can still pick the roads, then see where they come out on bid, see what the money is, but then once we get the actual amount of money, that's all we're gonna have.
Alright.
Then we may have to go back to the, to the drawing board and say, hey, this is not gonna work here, this is not gonna work there.
Right, and what I've gotta do is get a list of roads, we'll have to work the numbers in, see where that's gonna come in at, to see what we can put on there for a million dollars.
Well, the commissioners, I suggest that you have your list of roads, uh, I don't know how much more time you need, I've got my roads.
I'd give them to you today.
Okay.
Yeah, make sure you have them tuned in by Monday morning. Okay. Yeah?
We have to present at your next meeting.
Yeah. Well, I, I, I don't know what's gonna happen there. No, that is not my intention to be here that week, or at least a part of that week anyway, but you'll have the list of the roads anyway. What else you got?
I have a question. Uh, can you turn in the, uh, next year's community crossing grant? There's a new law that goes into effect next year, it's got to do with the lane miles, that's in addition to the community crossing grant. Has anybody talked to the commissioners about that? Are you aware of, uh, the change for, uh, the revenue for road support next year? It's called, uh, so it's called lane miles direct distribution, and, uh, they just had a seminar on it, and apparently you won't be able to get more than the community crossing total amount, but there are some counties that are looking at this program because for the community crossings, it's like we have to be the blacktop. The lane mile, I believe they're giving you the funds, so you still get the same amounts of community crossings, so if you get a million, then you can split your application between these two different opportunities, and where you match community crossing, you don't match the lane miles, but those monies do not have to be used specifically for asphalt or blacktop. That's kind of a layman's interpretation, but it's something that I just found yesterday, it was something new that came through on the seminar, and I didn't know if anyone here had, I tried to reach out to Greg and get a call back, so I just wanted to throw that out, that's something that maybe Mr. Neft can bring you in on, or, uh, someone from Highway Park can look a little bit more into, because it's a brand-new, uh, uh, funding opportunity.
Where does, where did this come from?
Uh, it came from, uh, it's like a summary of, uh, the new laws this year, and it's under the LOHET program, and it, uh, originally tied in with our real tax and our excise tax, but this is a change in law, it's under, uh, the HEA fourteen sixty-one, probably twelve, one seventy-three. I can send you a couple links to it if you like, but it's something I don't know much about, but.
Well, it'd be, it'd be something to look into.
Yeah, it may be something that might be beneficial or not.
Yep, thank you. Go ahead.
I don't have anything else, but I know.
Did you, on the, the FEMA, uh, we had the meeting with FEMA the other day, I thought it was a pretty good meeting. You, you might wanna address that to what we received from, I believe her name was that, Ashley, is that her name?
We, we had the meeting, Mr. Hobbs was there with the FEMA representatives. All completed work has been turned in to them, they're just doing up the work orders and getting the project, everything put in. We shouldn't be getting paid with, once that gets in, what she said, thirty to forty-five days.
About forty-five days, yeah.
We should start receiving some funds.
Didn't they want us to engage an engineer?
We do need some engineering for, um, the Thompson Road Bridge, the Server Road Bridge, and then in my opinion, the Fish Creek, where we had the, the slide on the edge of the road at the creek. I think we need some engineering on that, because that is a rock-bottom creek, and we've gotta find some way to stabilize the edge.
I thought they had mentioned, um, Rattlesnake, we're into gotten.
Rattlesnake, we are prepared to get all the bids for that. I just received all the information on the work orders that FEMA gave us. I'm putting together the stuff right now to get ready for the, so when they do the bids, the contractors do the bids, it's apples for apples, everything will be listed. This is what FEMA says we can do, I need a bid on these numbers. The one thing is, is all the contractors that we've got aren't paving crews, there is asphalt involved with this, so we'll have to have two different bids, one to do the culvert replacement, all the excavation work, and then we'll have to get a bid from, from contractors to do the asphalt side of it.
Sure.
It's not a lot of asphalt, it's fifty-four linear feet on this project, sixty feet on this project, twenty-five on this one, just to cover up what was damaged during the flood.
But we can get a cost on what that's gonna be, then what all the cost is to install the box culvert and all that stuff.
Yeah, we can get, I'm getting that all worked up now, so I can get it to the contractors, get it out, get bids in, and then you guys can make a decision on.
Because Ashley did send you the specs.
Yes, I've got that.
The specs on that.
Yes.
Did she send you the specs on Server Bridge? And did she send you anything on that?
I don't know that I have anything on Server Bridge, I'll check, because that was one of them that she said we needed engineering on.
Yes. So we need to make sure that we reach out and, uh, we got to have some engineers to look at these, 'cause they did say that's reimbursable.
Yes, the engineer costs, because they will be project.
So the, the three bridges was Thompson Road, Server and Fish Creek?
No, Fish Creek wasn't a bridge, Fish Creek is a, uh. Yeah, just a.
The creek ran right beside the road.
Right beside the road, and we lost the edge of the road, approximately halfway out into the road.
Didn't we have that same problem at Rattlesnake, or was it just because the water came up?
Rattlesnake really wasn't, yes, but not to the extent of what, Rattlesnake was a pipe issue. Fish Creek is the, the edge of the.
The actual roads being eroded away?
And that creek base right there is hard surface rock, so to do a proper fix on it, we don't have to return, I think it's gonna have to take some engineering on how to do that. I don't wanna fix anything half-heartedly.
No, we don't have to come back to it again, I agree. Okay. Anybody else, you guys got anything else? Send me that Rattlesnake Road stuff, please.
I did.
Did send it to.
Yes.
Okay.
If you didn't receive it, let me know when I send it.
I've got like, I've got like a hundred and twenty something emails, so I probably haven't looked. So that's something we can get ready, get, get started on.
And that's what I'm working on now, is getting the specs all laid out into, so it's handed to the contractors and we can get bids out.
Sounds good. You guys got anything else? You got anything else? Appreciate it, thank you. Sheriff, uh, did you, how's that cupcake?
I've got a sugar rush.
Okay, good, good. Do you wanna talk about the, uh, your issue with the, the overtime service, so we can bring this to light?
Absolutely. So you all know, sorry, I'm a little stuffy, um, we're shift workers. So sometimes policies work great for office personnel, but they don't work for shift workers. Every time one of my guys earns comp time, somebody, or, or takes, takes off comp time that they've earned, two other people earn comp time, every single time, every single person. I am only allotted so many people to cover a shift. I only have enough people to cover our schedule, I don't have extra people to fill gaps and holes in schedules. So when somebody takes off, it affects the entire schedule for the entire day. Obviously, they've earned the time, they deserve to use it, um, but what we run into is, is we get in this vicious cycle of one guy earns comp time, then they take it, two other people earn comp time, well, they've gotta take it, and that means two people's gotta take comp time, and we're only allowed eighty hours of banking. It, it is devastating to our schedule, devastating, um, I, I don't know how else to put it. But with the policy that they, um, have been only allowed to have comp time thus far, and, and again, comp time kills us. We don't, we have to cover the schedule, we have to, we don't have the option of, a guy takes off and, well, there's just a hole. We have to respond to things, we have to have people on the floor in the jail, we have to have officers on the road. We cannot just have comp time, we have to be able to earn, uh, overtime pay. And the other part is when they only get eighty hours, um, before they could just, it would roll over into overtime pay automatically beyond the eighty hours. I'm asking that the, the policy be changed. It doesn't, it does not work for shift workers.
No.
It does not work when you have to cover a schedule and you have to fill holes, um, when somebody, when somebody's, um, having to get, taking that day off, and then these two people have to earn that time, we, we can't keep up, you can't. I'm asking that the commissioners look at the policy, change the policy, um, or make an exception to, to dispatch EMS, law enforcement, jail, um, who are covering shifts and have to fill holes, um, and can't compromise that.
Well, and please grab me sheriff and chief, did you hear? It used not be that way.
No.
The county does not budget for comp time, the county budgets for overtime.
This was revised in two thousand and four.
Two thou, yes. And to reach your, your max of eighty hours, and somebody has to work over and tell them that they still have to accumulate comp time, is wrong. It, it's, it's not acceptable. Uh, the fact of it is, that's the reason that there's stipulations for comp time. If I'm correct, if I'm not, somebody please speak up. There, there's, there's guidelines about comp time, what, how many hours you can accumulate, and once you accumulate those comp time hours, it should automatically resort to overtime, not comp time. Now, and I said this, and I think in budget hearings or a couple meetings before, that any department, and especially with public safety and, and, um, you can't predict what your overtime's going to be. We never could predict it, and we didn't, and we had to make changes. But we didn't have to make changes to the comp time. We stayed with, like you do, it's eighty hours, some other people, I believe, is thirty-five hours, Sheila. That's the way it needs to be kept. That's it, it's, it's, this is not rocket science. The problem that we've had, and it's been going on for years and years, that sometimes, and I'm not picking on nobody, comp time gets abused. So i-if we go back to my thoughts, commissioners, of the fact that, you know, uh, the sheriff, uh, his, his men, they get eighty hours, anything over eighty hours, it goes into overtime. It comes to payroll, payroll ladies here, and if he, if, if Johnny's already got eighty hours, he turns in more comp time, it's automatically gonna red flag it, and say, no, he can't have no more comp time, it's gotta go into overtime. It's not for heck fair for, for his guys, and what he just presented, you know, one gets comp time, another guy takes off, it, 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 it's not an equal balance, it doesn't work. He simply needs more overtime money to compensate for the hours that his team works, and we can't predict how many hours they're going to work, you can't predict that, never should have predicted. And I don't know what your overtime budget is, Sheriff, now.
It needs increased, uh, you know, what killed us was the one, the one incident where we had the inmate who was hospitalized for a month.
Yes.
And we had, and there's no way you're gonna predict that, it was a medical emergency, there's no way you can predict that. He was in intensive care, or critical care for a month, and we had to babysit him twenty-four hours a day. That never happens, never happens, you never predict that that's ever gonna happen, but it did, and, and it was a nightmare. Scheduling nightmare, we don't have enough people to do that. It, it was, it, it was awful, and could it happen again? Of course it can, it'll always happen again, um, but we can't be in the same boat.
Well, I, I don't know how fair it is to, to have, honestly, you, you, you know, sheriff's got his eighty hours, and, and, uh, then he has to work overtime or garden somebody, and, and he's only allowed to accumulate comp time. It doesn't work for the county, because you can't get the time off to take off the comp time that you've earned. So why don't pay them overtime, at least they got the money in their pocket, they can spend that, you can't spend the comp time.
And, and the problem is to, and it's not a problem, it's a good thing, but it, it's a double-edged sword. Our people, our, our agency is like a, a, kinda like a family. You, you don't wanna screw your buddy, you know, you don't wanna, you don't wanna screw their life up, and knowing, and so these guys don't wanna take that time, because they know they're screwing two other people, um, down the road, and, and they don't wanna do that to the. down the road and and they don't want to do that to the, to their, to their coworkers. Which is great, a- and I appreciate that they're willing to look out for their, for their coworkers. But it's a double-edged sword.
I agree. We need to rewrite this policy. But as for right now, Sheila, I don't know how we do this. I probably, I don't know how to say it right.
Make a motion to allow overtime pay per the pending additional appropriation on the fourteenth with the council. We can backdate it this pay cycle and then moving forward. That forty-four thousand short of a major emergency should get him through the rest of the year. I'm also gonna work with them and see how much you spent, see what your averages have been, because I do think we need to increase the the request for next year and and part of that, but if you just allow the current to be done because it is outside of policy.
Then, okay, go ahead.
Then the other is, was it working back in June twenty twenty-one, which is one of the revision dates? I don't know if there's anything to rewrite. We might be able to just go back and pull the policy when it was actually working because there were two changes in twenty twenty-four.
Right, I see. I got them here. So and I'll have to ask you again for that motion.
Motion to allow to pay overtime to the sheriff's deputies with the pending appropriation. And then an updated policy will be.
That's my motion.
Does it not be, no. He said we think might need extended everybody that shift work, nine-one-one, uh EMS.
Has their own policy and EMS has their own overtime.
They have separate policies.
Yes, all policies.
All right, all right.
My, that that that, I don't, I can't every bit explain, but that's my motion effective immediately.
That's for just sheriff.
For sheriff, yeah.
Let's hear it, partner.
All in favor? So with that being said, for everybody else out here and you got your own policy, Chris, right?
Yeah, I'm just concerned if if that would um also need to reach out to your EMA director. I know he is constantly fighting.
It it does.
He's got meetings after hours. He's got, especially when emergencies happen, um you know, he's got to be back into work at eight o'clock at night or.
What it's going to affect is the simple fact that, um you know, we're talking about Jack and he's not here. He gets thirty-five hours comp time. Anything above that will be paid. Because if you don't keep the comp time in check, we're gone, we're already in trouble. Now, for Lindsay, for you, I'd like, I'd like a detailed list of who's got comp time, how much they got. Because I've asked this question in the past before, it would behoove the council to pay out the comp time. Behoove to pay out the comp time. Then you have a policy in place that states that you get thirty-five hours. Once you've reached that thirty-five hours and it goes over, it red flags it when it comes to payroll. See what I'm saying? There's no more, well, well now we got forty hours.
It doesn't flag me.
But we can set it up to where it does flag you.
I can talk to the system people to hopefully get.
Because that, that way it would never go over that guideline. Right now, if somebody is is working over and they're not getting time and half for it, they're getting comp time, we we've already violated the policy that we've created. So I don't, to me, it's just common sense. And if the sheriff or any other department that has overtime needs to increase their overtime budget, that needs to go before the council because the council budgets for overtime. They don't budget for comp time. Eventually, it's going to, it's going to catch up with the county where you're paying out a wall zoo of comp time. So I think it would behoove the council to take a look at those numbers that you're gonna create for us to say, this is what it's gonna cost to pay out the comp time. And hold strict guidelines that you can't go above that.
And I think too, you know, the number one job of of our leadership is to take care of our employees, obviously. I think that our employees would be, would be thrilled to be paid out on some of that comp time that they burned. And and it shows that you appreciate the the work that they put in. Because right now, you know, with the way the scheduling is, if they're gonna take comp time, if they're gonna, if they're gonna burn that comp time, somebody else is, somebody else is getting it.
Somebody's got to fill that shit.
Somebody's got to fill it.
Then if they're accumulating comp time too, you're just making matters worse.
It it's a vicious cycle. It it's vicious and it and it doesn't end.
Well, I I would like, when you can, Lindsay, I know, just take time. I'd like to see that report and I would like to go, you know, if I have to go before the council, us, the board go before the council. I I know money's always an issue. But if we don't nip it in the bud now, it's gonna become a major issue. It's already probably a pretty good significant chunk anyway. But wouldn't it be nice to get that slate cleaned? That make sense, Matt? Oh, I thought you had your hand up.
I just wanted to make sure that you're undermotive, that included the jail addition, right?
Yes. Absolutely.
One thing you can do. I mean, the the, I'll have to go back and share a couple things, but my recollection is the county has the option of simply eliminating comp time. In other words, you you don't have to have a comp time system where people get comp time hours as opposed to overtime. You can just set it so that they only get overtime. They only get overtime pay.
And I, the only problem I see with that is new officers. New officer comes in, they've accumulated zero time and something pops up.
I understand.
And and they need time for something, you know, a a wedding or a a death or whatever. That's the only part that I see with that that could affect.
Yeah, I'm not saying it's a perfect fix. I'm just saying that's, that's an option the county has.
Yeah.
Now, you can't get rid of, you can't just wave your magic wand and get rid of people's existing banks. Those those banks that they currently have.
Have to be paid out.
Have to be paid out. But but you don't have to have comp time. So it's just something for you to think about.
I just think the council, I'd take a good look at this list that you'll create for them. That way they'll know what they have to pay. And if they can do one, one section at a time. You know, I'd definitely start with public safety. Get that down, get them paid out, get, you know, stuff like that. That way, if the guy's working overtime, he's getting paid for it. He's not taking comp time. Another guy's got a Philly shift and he's getting comp time too. We're just, we're just multiplying the problem. We're not setting, we're not settling the problem, so.
Addie, WIS was doing policies first.
Yes.
She was starting with EMS, so she might be able to offer her gift. What needs to be, because that's the purpose of putting in all the policies.
She's, she's well versed in.
And you are coming from our overtime money, correct, sir?
I am.
Yeah, I'm impressed. Okay, effective meeting, sir.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Yes, sir. Matt? Matthew, Matt?
Morning.
Dave, how are you?
Oh, thanks. Went to sleep. Sitting there. I think they're waking up.
You have a cookie. You're a full burger. You had a cookie yet?
No, I I think I will after the meeting. So I don't look too messy. Pretty vicious eater.
I just take that cupcake, like we do at home. My granddaughter, she'll take it, she'll unwrap it. And I get one and she'll count, one, two, three.
That's the fun way to eat it.
I'm telling you, it works. It it is great that way. Got to have a little humor, got to let it keep from crying. Go ahead, Matt.
Nine, nine-thirty meeting, huh?
I've I've had it here already, sir.
So here we are again. It's been, it it's been a long, long road again with dispatch. So as you guys know, we've had a vacancy in the director position for quite some time now. I think this is, this is the longest we've gone. Put it out a couple different times. We did not get in both of those processes, we did not get any applicants that met the job requirements for the job description. So we held some interviews here recently and after uh the commissioners decided to contract with with Dave. His networking was able to to bring some more candidates, more options in. So we held interviews uh just a couple days ago, a few days ago. Um I sent you all the recommendation from the board. We had an executive meeting um to hold those interviews. Uh we interviewed five people. Four of them are current dispatchers. I've listed the, in that uh recommendation that I sent you, everybody we interviewed. And I think we, everybody did a good job and I think the center is, we have a lot of of people in the center that are that are dedicated. They they, they're frustrated and completely understandable. It's been chaos uh for them and it it, I hate it for them. Their schedules have been terrible. Uh they've had to to make a lot of adjustments in their personal life to keep this place uh up and going. A lot of people have have put extra work in to keep this afloat. I appreciate all of them uh and everything they've they've done. The only thing the center is lacking unfortunately is is just years of experience. Uh we have a lot of employees that uh, you know, that are still early in their career. Everybody's got drive. Everybody wants to do it. Everybody wants to do the job right. We're just at that spot, the turnover that we've had, that everybody is still pretty early on in their careers. But they do a good job. They're doing the best that they can um with what they've been given to work with. And and I've told a few of them that uh, you know, we have our issues in the dispatch center, but I have no doubt that everybody is doing the absolute best that they can do. We're failing them and not giving them the tools that they need to better themselves and do it the way that they they really want to do it. Through training, uh through being able to have a a full staff at the center so that they can do training. We don't have people working by themselves uh and being overwhelmed. Burnout's terrible right now. Uh there's sixteen open shifts uh in October that we have, that there has to be somebody working. They're gonna, it it's it's solo shifts. We're trying to hire, we're trying to get people in there, but we gotta get this ball, we gotta get this ball rolling. And and I think that we'll be able to do that. So I appreciate everybody at the center. I appreciate everybody that put in for the position, everybody that interviewed, everybody did a great job. Everybody had something to bring to the table. Which it is great. And I think we have a lot of good candidates for, you know, s- future positions and uh some possibilities in supervisory roles and things like that. With that being said, uh the board held their meeting and voted to recommend Deborah Simmons as the nine-one-one director. Uh she's, comes from Putnam County with twenty-four years of experience. Five years of those were assistant director under Dave Costin, twelve years prior to that as a supervisor. She's a former dispatcher for Owen County. Um I personally worked with her back when I first started. Um she was dispatching then. Uh I think she'll do a great job. She comes highly recommended from Dave. Um and I think with him working as well as a consultant with dispatch as we move forward, I think it's a, it's a great team. They've already worked together. They already have a a working relationship. And there's already a lot of ideas and things that they can bring to the table and work with the the current staff to to kind of build this back up and get some to to get some sense of normalcy to the department and and move it forward. So that's where the departments are, or the nine-one-one board's at on their recommendation.
Commissioners?
So how long you been there, Dave? About three weeks, two weeks?
Um yes. Uh I've talked to Chris, I mean, I've known Chris for years and he's at, you know, we've had long conversations about dispatch uh for years. Uh I just recently met Matt and we've also had a lot of long conversations about dispatch. Uh my career, I I started in nineteen seventy-eight, uh way back when we just had a, uh I was a jailer dispatcher. And uh when we consolidated dispatches in eighty-five, I was put in charge of that. Uh in my career, I've been a reserve deputy, a volunteer fireman, an EMT. And I did that not because I want to do those things, but I thought they would make me a better dispatcher and I think they did. Uh I have a an understanding of what the responders go through and and a desire to make sure that they can do their job well by doing my job well. Um and of course, I grew up with nine-one-one. I did the addressing in uh Baden County. I was coordinator for that. And uh, oh gosh, uh oh, past few years, I was also the EMA director in our county at the time. The EMA director is a part-time job, so I did both at the same time. In that, I learned uh disaster communications is what they call a communications unit under a type-three disaster, which is like a a Henryville. And we learned how to do disaster communications with that. So I've kind of grew up with nine-one-one and I I understand, understand it pretty well. Uh I guess why they came to me. They did, they knew me and and thought I could help with them.
Right. So my question is, you've got extensive background in this. Is this hire gonna, gonna solve the situation? Does it want to address the issue?
Deborah's motivated. She's a worker. Um I I think uh we're already actually discussing a battle plan already. Uh if if she is your choice. Um part of that'll be is that she's gonna go on the fast track to learn how to, she got to be a working dispatcher as well, she understands that. So she's got to learn that real quick. Uh we're gonna have to jump in there and and analyze your tools that they have. We're confident that some of the tools you have could probably do the job we want to do. Part of what we want to get implemented is make sure that you're meeting state standard for training because there is a statute that specifically says that dispatchers have to have these type of trainings and we have to do an audit to make sure that your current dispatchers are doing that. And if they're not, then we have to make sure that's remedied because the penalty for that is they'll take away your funding. Um if if we don't, we don't make sure that you're compliant with that. And then we want to uh, I guess, start making sure that we're implementing things I think have been talked about for years, like your fire departments have a mutual aid box system. I know that's a burning desire for them to get that implemented. It's a safety thing. We we need to get that implemented. I think they had that designed years ago. And I think it's still not implemented. We want to do quality assurance. Um and I think Deborah's gonna need two supervisors, probably amongst your current staff, to help her with that. And basically what that entails is we listen to ten to twenty percent of the call load, analyze it, make sure that dispatchers are doing what they need to do. And if they're doing, I mean, way dispatch should be done, and actually it's, some ways it's uh, if they do it right, it's uh, makes their life easier. It is that um there are actually a specific set of questions they ask for a call type. And you ask those questions for beta. Now, to answer those questions, tell them how they dispatched that and they dispatched that accordingly. Now, as we, there is some, that is a standard, but there is some play in that and involving that play would be discussing with uh Chris, Matt and the board, uh the Fire Chief Association on how we want to dispatch that. So that's all kind of a, a gray area we can program. And we adjust those according to resources that they have. So there's a lot of intimate discussion like, okay, you know, I I have a tanker here, but I don't have a tanker there. You know, we have a major structure fire load here, then we don't have a mutual aid work. We automatically send a tanker there. It's automatic. So uh and that makes uh quicker, makes our uh safety quicker um and more efficient. We've thought it all out and we want to implement that. So if it, um, kind of give a rough idea, kind of were, uh kind of the vision I'm hearing from these guys uh that we want to accom- eventually accomplish and that can be accomplished, I believe.
Have, have you been there long enough to tell how many people were short down there?
My understanding, you're about three short. So and that's, again, uh when I, in my, I left dispatch, it's still a stressful thing. We have to cover twenty-four seven, two bodies in there all times. That's just for safety reasons. Even on Christmas Day, um we did eight-hour shifts. We knew that three, six people were going to be working Christmas Day. Uh so that is a form of stress for them. And obviously, we had people taking PTO time off. You're talking about comp time. All that stuff has to be filled. So it is stressful and right now, um retention is probably gonna be um a a discussion for us on how we can best accomplish that. It may be looking at, uh I have to say, we may be looking at the pay rate, especially if we get people experience and that those people may be paid a little bit extra. You know, I just put this out there as food for thought. And I just put this out there as food for thought.
Sure.
That it may help with retention, it may help with hiring. You know, we definitely need some experienced people in there. My understanding you're most experienced dispatcher has four years' experience?
Just under.
Just under four. So, that's, I mean, in my experience, it takes six months to even feel like you're ninety percent mastering your craft. And then another guy, she can take years to get another ten percent. It's just that knowing, dispatching is something you just have to do cold. I mean, you just, okay, here's this call, you just do it. You know, you don't have to sit there and, you know, can't spend time thinking because, you know, from the time you go off hook to the time you're dispatching an emergency apparatus, the national standard's a minute. So, they need to be making a decision in a minute. So, that's why those questions are pretty lined out exactly the way they are and then you dispatch it accordingly. Oh, gosh. I've become an expert on, I guess, error. There's ninety-five percent of all error is done by two things. You're in a hurry and you're multitasking. And these are all things dispatchers do in spades. They're always in a hurry, they're always multitasking. So, how do you fix that? I'd say what airplane pilot does is he has a checklist. So, you have a checklist and you follow that checklist to the letter. Because we've thought it out, so, and again, that's cue, that's the questions and that's how you dispatch it. And actually, it's, and strangely enough, it's that simple, but we just need to be implementing that. It takes training, it takes habituation, it takes quality assurance to make sure that's being done. And I'm confident that it's gonna take some time and I'm sure there's gonna be storm of stress. And I'll say that upfront because again, it's gonna be a new habit. Everyone's gonna have to learn how to do, do stuff that way. But it's, but I think eventually, given time, hopefully about a year, you're gonna see drastic improvement in how we're dispatching and how we're retaining. Because of the stress of the work, again, for me, the major stress is always trying to make sure I have a body in there, not really the stress of the work. If they're doing the work and they're following the cue, the questions exactly, and something bad happens, what we do is we do an analysis after that with the 911 Board. We sit down here, okay, we asked these questions, it didn't get us what we wanted it to do. So, maybe the way we're asking the questions needs to be refined. And so, that's where you get that feedback, you do an improvement. But it's not on the dispatcher's shoulder that they made this error. It's the system and we fix the system. And it's continually, it's continually being refined. It's, in many ways, it's a science, in many ways, it's an art. So, and the art part is where how we refine it. And that's through a lot of discussion and a lot of input from your responders and from dispatchers and how that's done. So, that's ideally how it should work. And it's gonna take us some time to get there, we got a lot to learn. I mean, Deborah, I mean, she's got to learn how you guys dispatch, that means learning your tools. I think she's already familiar with Owen County, she dispatched there years ago. So, I think that's gonna come quick to her. And then try to, at the same time, try to get three more bodies in there and get them trained as efficiently, as quickly as we can. And again, make sure they're meeting state standard. And if those dispatchers are not there now, make sure they're meeting state standard. I think that's a serious liability for you if they're not meeting state standard. Because again, it's kind of, you know, one thing I've heard is that, you know, I've been to a lot of dispatch centers and they're all different. This is Indiana, it's a home rule state. You'll never see anything as more home rule than an Iowa center. But at the same time, there are standards. The way Chris does CPR, he doesn't have discretion on how he has to do CPR. It's a standard. You do it this way, if you don't do it this way, then you could be sued. Someone could get hurt, someone, something bad can happen. We don't want anything bad to happen, we want to fix that. So, there's a standard, like CPR is given for holding the telephone. It's a standard. And I'm not sure how many of your dispatchers right now are meeting that standard. So, we need to make sure that's being done. I hope the answers.
This is probably not a fair question because it's ambiguous, but do you see any kind of major movement in our staff down there due to this? And if that's not fair, you can just tell me.
I don't know.
There's, there have, there was at least one employee that mentioned to me that they thought there could be some people leave. I would hope not. Again, everything that we're talking about here, and I can't, I can't stress this enough, ninety-five percent of what we're talking about is of no fault to the dispatchers. They can only do what they're trained to do and that has been lacking. The last couple of directors we have had have come in with ideas and thoughts, but they were not executed. They did not follow through with them. So, the dispatchers are just left to do the best that they can with what they've got. You know, if someone told me to go build a house, I don't know how to build a house. I'll do the best I can. I have no idea whether it's gonna stand up or not, you know. And then, again, they were, the calls are being dispatched. The public are calling, 911's being answered, they're getting the help that they need. Can we do it better? Sure, we can do it better, we can all do it better. But again, they, this is of no fault to them. They are doing the absolute best they can. And I hope, I really hope that the dispatch staff understand where we're coming from and trying to better the center and trying to, trying to make some changes that, like Dave said, you know, it may be difficult for a little while, but in the long run, what I want is for them to come to work and be glad to come to work, be comfortable and like, like what they're doing. Right now, it's just constant stress. You know, they're coming into work and some of them are unsure about, about what to do and they're left in situations where they're the only ones answering the phone. There's nobody to ask a question to, they have no leadership, they have no guidance. And that's, that's a problem, you know. Again, I don't, I don't know, I don't know how we've kept the people that we've kept. So, again, this is a no fault to them whatsoever. And most of them have stressed, they want the training, they want leadership, they want this, this center to be professional and to be something that they can be proud of. So, yeah, I think, given where we're at right now, you know, the comment has been said, in the last couple of days of, at least by one person, that bringing somebody in from the outside is just doing the same thing that we've been doing the past couple of times and it hasn't worked. It hasn't worked. But we have, it's like I told you in the recommendation letter I sent, Deborah's the most qualified person we've had to apply for this position, period. She's current, she's been doing this job for twenty-four years and is still, she's where she's at right now. As we sit here talking, she is at work dispatching. So, she's very current in what's going on. And I think that's something we have very much lacked in the last couple of directors. So, and a lot of the stuffs Dave's talking about, we have the tools in place. They just have never been implemented. Talking about the call system, you know, and asking the questions verbatim that he's talking about. We have that, the county has paid for that system, we have it. It started to be implemented and then we lose a director. And it's just left in limbo. So, it's thirty percent operating right now, it just needs to be finished. Which again, is something, you know, Dave's gonna have to tackle. So, yeah, it's definitely workable, it is. We've got, we've got, we've got good staff there. Not only do they want to do the job and make a career out of this, they want to do it here. That's, and that's huge. That is absolutely huge because we need to keep them. So, so yeah, I think it's gonna be great for the center and I hope, I don't want anybody to leave. I hope they don't. I know saying, you know, give the new director a chance if that's what you guys decide to go with. I know they've heard that in the past, you know, and I don't blame them for having their doubts. But, but I honestly do believe this is the best decision for the center.
Well, wholeheartedly, I want to say thanks to all the dispatchers. I don't know what Stephanie's back here for doing all, all this do and for hanging in and hanging on. We brought Dave in for a reason, to bring in his expertise as a mentor, to establish some guidelines and a lot of training and stuff like that. And for the other Board of Commissioners and the public, I sat through the interviews of all these people, but I left when it was over. I did not have a vote in this, I want that to make it perfectly clear. I did not stay back and give my opinion. I left and the board met without me, but I did sit and listen to the interviews. And like the chief said, I think the dispatchers down there have got the heart to do the job. The heart to do the job. And as said, as Board of Commissioners, we have to make sure that we're providing them with every tool that they need to do the job. And that includes a 911 Director. So, it is my recommendation that we take the recommendation of the 911 Board and to accept Deborah Simmons as the new 911 Director.
I'll say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Three-hill. Stephanie, thank you.
Thank you.
Dave, and I kind of, I wasn't making fun of Dave the other day. Yeah, I was. It's bringing Dave on and thank, I want to thank the council for funding Dave's position contract-wise. But I did ask Dave, or kind of, I don't know if I asked him, if I told him or something, that Dave's here for three months and he's willing to stay for another three months if necessary. Everything is a cost, I understand that Dave's worth every dollar that he's getting. But as one Commissioner, it's just my opinion, I want Dave, before he leaves and departs the 911 Center, to be absolutely hundred percent, or ninety-nine point nine percent, confident that not only in the director, but in the dispatchers themselves, that they have got the tools that they need to get this job done, to protect the people of Owen County and protect public safety. And I don't know how long it's gonna take Dave. You know what, it is what it is, you pay for what you get. And so, I told Dave he could stay for six years. He kind of laughed. I just don't want Dave, I just don't want you leaving and just because we hired a new director. There's a lot of things to implement and get underway even with the new director. So, I appreciate you coming on board. Thank you Stephanie and thanks to all the dispatchers out there. A lot more out. Department heads. Lighted officials.
No.
Is this kind of a, would be a tentative date?
No.
We'll get you a new employee package passed on.
I think Chris gave her, or something else.
I gave her some of the stuff that we had, just so that when she walks in, she'll have some of the stuff filled out for you. But I'm sure there'll be more things that you guys will have to put in front of her.
No, thanks to the board for your hard work, appreciate that, Dave. Chris, do you have something?
I just went to pour concrete today, so.
You want to update quickly on the doughboy project, how it's going?
I think, here, I think they want to go, you know, draft a, I was letting go, but he's coming from. So, was it Tuesday? They started, last Tuesday, they started digging, doing some groundwork and found a ring around the doughboy that had been there since it was built and they covered up the dirt. And we have, we decided that needed to stay. And it needed to be used in the design and we've kind of redesigned some things. So, there was some research, I was just told a while ago, some guys looked up some of the doughboy statues across the United States and a lot of them had that ring around them. So, I don't know if that's something that when he sold, when Mike Wesley sold a statue that he gave him plans for the, for the base or what, I don't know. But they said that a lot of those statues had that same ring around them. So, but yeah, it's kind of been a challenge getting some of the angles and slopes for the concrete to fit and work in the way it's supposed to. But they're down there pouring concrete today and I'm excited.
Yeah.
It's gonna be beautiful, I think.
They stamped some of the concrete?
They did stamp some of the concrete and have tinted some of the concrete in gray right now.
Yeah, they're gonna, what they're pouring today, they're gonna stain. We got some color charts here, we got a, so it's gonna have some color to it. So, it's, it's gonna be beautiful. Thanks to everybody who's contributing to that.
It's really gonna turn out to be great.
Yeah. Anybody else?
I got two, two things to report. Our new range is ready for some gravel.
Oh, yeah.
We talked about that a while ago. I don't know if that's something that's still a possibility or if we need to look at.
No.
Look at that. So, we've got like a carport, like a shelter house going out there. They're gonna need some gravel under it. And then our storage building, we'll need a gravel bed for it to be placed. Depending, I don't know what's available, wish list items, I guess, you know, a drive and a parking area. I don't know if that's something that's possible. I have, you know, if we need to start looking, you know, on what we need to fund, I just need to know for moving forward so I can get the buildings out there and get started so we can hopefully, like, do qualifications out there at the end of the month.
I agree. I do think at least the road that's already back there, that goes back there, falls under Commissioners. Anyway, you get with Chad and tell him, take Chad.
And they, they, they did fix the one area of the road that was washed out and awful back there.
But I think it needs stoned.
I mean, yeah. Yeah, it's, there's still gravel there, it just, you know.
Before we get ourselves into a situation where there's not stone there because basically if you're gonna have people going out there more and more driving on stuff like that.
I'd say more than anything that we need would be the center of that cut because we've got, like, my truck will go over it, but the guys with direct chargers or something lower, they just straighten the bottom on, that would be, that would be nice, but.
Can you go out there and Chad and take a look? Because the drive from there all the way back that's already there exists, belongs to the Commissioners anyway.
We can get the buildings and stuff back there, I'm just talking about the gravel beds. Is that something that?
If you can show him what needs to be done and where it needs to be sitting.
Okay.
We'll, you know, we'll work it out, we'll work with him to get that done because it needs to be done.
The second thing, that F-150 for the building department is ready. Do you want us to pay for that decommissioning of that vehicle? Or it's five, it's five hundred and thirty-five dollars to have everything removed out of it and have it cleared out with all the emergency equipment? So, I mean, it's not our vehicle anymore, so just.
Whose equipment is it?
Whose equipment's what? The emergency equipment?
Equipment's in there, isn't it your equipment?
He wants his stuff.
Well, there's none of it that we can reuse.
What are you gonna do?
How it is, the bits, all vehicle-specific stuff, it can't go in anything but an F-150. The building department can't have red and blue lights, so.
Can we just cut the wires?
The radios, the radios that were in it are, I mean, had an EF Johnson in it that's one of the first ones from the county, it's pretty obsolete. We're not putting it in anything else. So, it was just literally getting all that stuff out of there to get it ready for them. You know, we just, we didn't budget for it, so if we need to pay it, we'll figure it out. I'm sure she doesn't have the budget to pay five hundred and thirty-five dollars for it.
We got any money anywhere to decommission?
The Commissioners have all the money, so. Five hundred and thirty-five.
We need a motion on that then?
Wait a minute, do we, wait, what just meant? Do we get a full tank of gas?
Yeah, we'll give you full tank of gas, absolutely.
There we go.
Question, does it take the decommission, just taking all the wiring and lights out?
Yeah, stripping all the wiring, the lights and sometimes the console, but I haven't leave the console when it physically.
There you go. Win-win, save five hundred dollars.
You owe my mechanic's lunch.
Can you guys pay for lunch?
No.
You guys are tight, man.
It just never ends with you, does it?
Yeah. Okay.
Hey, on that, out there, where you're wanting the shooting range and all that, Chad, I think we could use them fifty-three Xs, and that'd put down a really good base.
For those, for the selling.
Oh, yeah, but we get that, we got that, get that dirt cheap, two dollars.
It's all marked up there, Chad. I put stakes up where the buildings are gonna go. Everything's kind of set where if you're out there sometime, I can meet you out there. Doesn't matter, but everything's taped out where...
If it's taped out where you need the buildings, that's the main issue.
Are you going out today?
I'll go out to the center.
I'll go out with you.
No.
Love you knowing.
Yeah, they, they have to be way back off. Yeah, just get those dirty fifty-threes, man. That'd be, it's cheap, so... Anything else, sir?
I mean, didn't really answer my question about the five hundred and thirty-five bucks.
Deborah want to decommission?
It's already been done. In the future, I know that.
Have them decommission.
It's already decommissioned. It's already done. It's done today.
So you owe a hundred or five hundred?
Yeah. I got to pay for five hundred and thirty-five.
Now we're getting to it.
Oh, so you've already done it, but you got a bill for five hundred and thirty-five dollars that you want us to pay?
Well, I mean, we can...
Let's just say it. That's the way it is.
All I'm, all I'm saying is that, you know, it's going to another department. It's...
He's playing hardball.
Dave, don't look at me like that.
We got, we'll...
Trying to be fiscally responsible for the department.
Okay, we'll pay for it. Make a motion. I'll make a motion that we pay for Matt's mistake, I mean, Matt. Five hundred and thirty-five dollars, decommission the Ford F-150 that's going to the building department that's already been decommissioned, and they just want us to pay for it. Is that about right?
I'll second that.
All in favor for paying for the decommissioning of the Ford 150 from the Sheriff's Department going to the building department? More so? All right, three-o.
Thank you. Thanks, Dave.
Oh, you're welcome.
Thanks, Dave.
Next time, let's go to the highway department.
I didn't know till now. They're busy. I don't know if they got time to decommission.
Okay, well, public comments, everybody done? Anybody need anything? Commissioners need anything? County attorney? Sheila? Oh.
Public comments.
Yes, go ahead.
No, this is quick, simple. We sent you an email regarding the exposed sewer line on the road.
Yes.
Yeah. Are you guys reading the mail?
Yes, I am. Yeah, I seen the picture, and I appreciate those pictures.
And you just want to make sure you got it.
Yes. Uh, one final, no, go ahead. Yes, you're in.
I just wanted to say, I don't know what department takes care of those flowers that are mahogany basket flowers around the square, but...
Townspend's or...
They're beautiful, aren't they?